Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the special call meeting for August twenty-third, roll call. Mayor, the Honorable William Bill Edwards.
Yeah.
The Honorable Mark Baker. The Honorable Catherine Robb.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes. The Honorable Helen Zieg Willis.
Here.
The Honorable Naima Gilier.
Here.
The Honorable Rosie Jackson. The Honorable Khalid Kamau.
Kamau.
Kamau, I'm sorry. You have a form, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I have a microphone, so.
Okay. Now you, Mr. President. First item. It's presentation, uh, Budget Department presentation. First one is the capital and U R A projects.
Mayor and Council, if you see your handouts for the booklets that we're going to have, there's a blue place. So if you turn into that blue mark, if you turn into the blue mark, and that's where the capital, U R A capital projects is, the blue mark in your book. That's where we are going to start from. So the top part of that is what you approved, council approved. And then you have the, that follows is the submitted capital request from fire department. Then you have parks, then you have police. The total of that one, you say it's eight point nine million dollars at the bottom of the page. The blue mark, councilman, councilman Willis. Yeah, there. Yeah, the top part of that is what you approved. Then these ones that follow are the ones that were submitted to you through the city manager's proposed budget. And all of them, they add up to number three from the bottom, that's eight point eight million dollars. We need to go to seven million dollars. Now we have more than of one point nine million dollars. We need to trim that to seven million dollars. So we have to remove one point nine million dollars. It's up to you to give a priority of what can get in there and what you can remove. As I sent the email yesterday, you have to remove to get into seven million dollars. If you have something that is not included here, that will be in addition to. So if there's anything that is capital project, it's not on this page, it's not part of the twenty-twenty capital projects. All these projects will be funded with U R A money, some of them, they will not qualify, but we are not yet there until you decide which one will make up to the seven million dollars. And that one, we have to do it today so that we will be able to have the financial advisor send them this list that you are going to make seven million dollars. And they can tell us which one qualify and which one do not qualify. So I can go ahead and find money to fund those ones that will not qualify.
Let's go, Yara.
Where is the one point four million dollars for the building on Old National?
One point eight four million dollars and the rest of them, I said to each one of you yesterday, that's for twenty-nineteen. That's already approved. All those projects have got funding, the funding is through your authorization for the CFO to go and find funding. How we are finding is to find whatever we have now. And if I don't have enough, I'll go out there and borrow pending the approval, pending the outcome of the U R A money. That may be in sometime in October. So all of those ones that I said yesterday, they are all approved. The total five point three million dollars. So it's five point three million dollars plus this seven plus the following, it will add up all our capital projects to fifteen million dollars. We can't go beyond that, that's what we will be able to borrow.
Okay. You're talking about the U R A budget for twenty-nineteen and the U R A budget for twenty-twenty. But the U R A hasn't met and we haven't issued any bonds. So we actually don't have the money for twenty-nineteen. So if there's, if there's money, if, can we not make cuts to the twenty-nineteen list and the twenty-twenty list?
Counsel, you can do anything, but you approved that one, you can do anything. However, those projects now are in progress. And what we are trying to do is to encompass all of them.
So you're saying every project on that list is in project, it is in process? Even though we haven't even issued the bonds, we don't, we haven't even issued the bonds to get the money?
So, yes, the issuing of bonds will take at least sixty days. So during the time you were authorizing the plan, in there, there's a resolution that authorized the reimbursement.
Again, I, I hear you, but I'm saying the U R A board hasn't even met yet, not once.
That's true.
But every project on the twenty-nineteen list is already underway and we haven't even met?
It's underway of the authorization of reimbursement. Once the U R A money, they have made the plan, you have, we approved the plan. Once that money is in, it will be reimbursed from where we are borrowing now.
Let me, let me, let me ask it a different way. Have we made commitments to vendors? Have we signed contracts for U R A projects before U R A has met?
You can decide at any time to get back to say what we authorized the, the city manager, we authorized the department, say, about the twenty-nineteen, including the public safety building, which the contract, I think, has already been signed. You can always say, we no longer want those ones, stop them. But yes, the majority of those ones, they have already, um, signed contracts, they have already, uh, got into some of, because have already signed.
So I just want to be clear for the record, we have contractually obligated ourselves to pay money that we have not even met to issue a bond.
But you have authorized.
I'm just, that, that's, I mean, I just, it sounds like that is something that we've done. So I just want that to be noted for the record. Um, we need to, we need to. We need, we need to, as soon as possible, meet as a U R A. Like, if we're already obligated to pay, we keep saying it's only going to take forty-five days or sixty days, but we haven't even started that clock yet because we haven't met. So that's, that's troubling for me. I seem to remember that it would not take one point four million dollars to do this building at Old National. So if that hasn't changed, then there is money in that budget. We don't have to make all the cuts from this year, that's all I'm saying. Like, like this, there, we, we have more, we have more tools in our toolbox, especially if we haven't. If we had issued a bond for that, I could see that being, you know, a different thing. But I'm, I'm just trying to understand, um, we can borrow up to twenty, we're only borrowing up to sixteen, so is that? I, I just want to know what all of our options are with this U R A besides, besides cutting. I'm not saying that we're not going to cut, but I'm just saying, I just want to know what all our options are.
So on the twenty, we have the capability of borrowing up to twenty million dollars depending on our taxi power that we have. However, because of our financial status that we have, we have negative eight million dollars fund balance. No bank, no financial institution will give us twenty million dollars. So far, what the financial advisor has done to go into, I think, whether seven, six banks they have gone to, we can go up to fifteen million dollars. Next year, maybe we may extend there, but as of now, if we are not investing in the payment of the fund balance, that's our limit. And the more we borrow money from other, other than U R A, the more expensive it becomes.
I understand. Uh, so fifteen, it sounds like we've gotten the credit limit, we've been pre-approved for fifteen million dollars. But again, there, there's money on the other list. So I, I, I think it would be helpful if before the end of this meeting, maybe after your presentation, I'm sure we're going to have an executive session, if you could just go ahead and print out what we've already approved and so we can take a look at that list.
May I have the twenty-nineteen printed out?
Where's the city manager?
He's, he's coming in for, cancel, he's just grabbing.
Okay, so first of all, I would love to hear his recommendation, um, because you are, you should be working together, the CFO and the city manager. So I would love to hear, and he's in charge of operations, so I would definitely love to hear his recommendation. Second of all, um, there is, I see the Wolf Creek Amphitheater on here for one point eight billion dollars. And I don't see, at Tom Lo, and I don't see that really happening in twenty-twenty because of litigation. And we can discuss that in executive session. So if that's the case, we might can take this out. And, and that's, that's a significant amount right there. I am not, I am not comfortable with reducing any of the public safety budget for that, um, new location because we don't know what unforeseen circumstances, uh, may arise when construction, when constructing that, um, building. So I am, I'm uncomfortable with touching any of that money. But I am comfortable with removing this one point eight million dollars, uh, from the twenty-twenty U R A because it does not look like, um, we are going to realistically be able to use that money due to the circumstances we're in right now. And I'm being, you know, I don't want to go into detail because I know that's a litigation issue. And that's one point eight million. So if you're saying you're looking for, and then we'll have to find another, another hundred thousand.
Then if you remove that one, you have drawn that, then you will have almost done it. Exactly enough, the city manager is almost in it.
Um, I'm, I'm good, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm done, that's all I want to say right now. Oh, um, well, he just got here, but I would love to hear his re, my recommendation, he's saying that we got to find, Mr. Don, I know you're just getting here, he's saying that we got to find one point nine million dollars to cut. My recommendation, I, first of all, I asked to hear what, I wanted to hear your recommendation to handle this deficit. And then, and my other recommendation was to remove the one point eight million dollars from the Wolf Creek Amphitheater and Tom Lo since we are, um, in litigation. I don't see that, I don't foresee that happening in fiscal year twenty-twenty. And so that's the one point eight million dollars right there that.
You're right, you hit the nail on the head. I know we've talked about it in an ancillary fashion, but I would recommend you leave the operational money there related to it because you still have to do some of your due diligence and some of those other things for both of those, um, facilities. But the actual capital funding I will remove. And I, I mean, Mr. Malazey and I spoke about this yesterday. I think my recommendation is, and, and just to be frank, we can't do everything. So I would simply ask that while these are the things with no, uh, uh, I mean, we vetted them, but we haven't removed or added anything. And so this is a great opportunity for council to prioritize what we want to do in year one of our five-year program. Because I think that's what we haven't talked about, is that your capital program is in five-year increments. And so you don't necessarily have to take on all of these things at once. If you identify what your priorities are, the others still remain as part of the capital program, they just get funded in the next year. So that would be my recommendation.
I would agree with Councilwoman Willis, but I am curious as it relates to, um, what the cost if we were to purchase these two facilities at the state rate, what is that dollar amount? Does anybody have a figure?
So the, uh, the estimate related to, uh, Southwest Art Center is the one that's most reasonable? And it's actually already in the F Y nineteen budget? I think we allocated about ninety-two thousand, that included closing costs and, and the actual acquisition. Uh, there are other things, I think it's a survey.
So Southwest Art Center probably should be substantially less than that, I think it's maybe about thirteen thousand.
But it was the surveys that you had to get done, the closing costs and some of the others, is why we allocated about ninety-two.
So ninety-two will safely do it, but.
It's not just Southwest though, remember we had the bond station, it was all of those properties.
Oh, it's the total for all?
Absolutely, for all of the properties that will easily be transferable, it's about ninety-two thousand. We added sixty thousand at the mid-year budget modification. And so the, if that is acquired under the state, uh, regulations, you don't have to acknowledge it in F Y twenty at all because it's already in the F Y nineteen budget.
Okay, so, so you, just so I'm clear, if we were to operate and acquire these properties to include Wolf Creek and Tom Lo, understanding what we just said, that money would cover these two facilities as well?
Be everything except Tom Lo and Wolf Creek.
Right, so my question specifically has to do, if we took it at the, uh, current rate, hundred dollars per acre, all of that, what would these two facilities cost us?
Wolf Creek would be in the fifty-three hundred range. The acreage is about forty-two plus eleven plus five, so whatever that totals times a hundred. But then we may have to do. It wouldn't be, it would be somewhat diminished, I mean, it would, it would not be a significant number. It would be within the five to the seven thousand range.
Okay, and, and the reason I'm asking, even if we reduced it, at least we would have some money if no money is budgeted in our general operating acquire, if for some reason, which I figured it would be minimal compared to this number.
I, I think the, the piece of highlight though is the one point eight million, the capital funding. If we acquired it at the state rate and you took my recommendation to leave those operating funds there, you would have enough to cover it by far.
That was my question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering if the ninety-two that you haven't done.
The ninety-two was in F Y nineteen, in F Y twenty, we added operating funds for Southwest Art Center and Wolf Creek. And so the capital funds was for the acquisition, which is why I'm saying.
I'm clear.
Okay.
I'm clear, I just want to make sure just in case we were able to.
Just a minute.
So, Mr. Malazey, at this point, uh, Councilwoman Willis has recommended the, the Wolf Creek, Tom Lo, excuse me, move. Is there anything else that we could, uh, kind of come to get down to?
There's only a difference, okay, my, if you don't find anything, I think that will be fine because all of these ones will be funded with the U R A.
We can do that with the hundred thousand, you can find somewhere.
That hundred thousand may go to the borrowing.
So I'm going to qualify that we have two council members who have projects that have not been allocated any money. And that's items, if you look at the top of the list, that's U R A items nine and eleven. So depending how much you allocate for those, it will, um, adjust the amounts that are under here. So I guess there needs to be a discussion among the council as to what.
What's over your court room?
That is actually Councilwoman Jackson's project.
What is it?
They're houses that I want to, um.
So do we have any?
Right. Excuse me. Yeah, lighted houses that I want to purchase so that we could build a recreational facility. Period.
So I guess at some point, there will be a discussion between the council as to how much you would allocate to those parcels, to those partners.
We already have like three P partnerships to work towards it, it's not just, we're starting.
What are you going to need?
You looking for the number exactly right now?
Yeah, I have zero here now.
Well, I was, I was talking to, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, and it might be something that we should reserve, I guess, in executive session for real estate.
Okay, good.
So as of now, we kind of like, we are there, we are wanting to. Depending on how much we are going to fill in the eleven and nine, that may need us to make some adjustments.
Well, since we're within a hundred thousand dollar, uh, limit, uh, I think that we can hold it up to that for, for executive session. And then to talk about the, the two add-on, possible add-ons that we're going to have, I just didn't need to hold that for executive session.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So with that, now we continue where we stopped on the Tuesday. We will have finished today. And then, uh, we'll see where we are, the city manager will review, will review and, uh, recommend whether there will be a need, which will be likely some deductions where to deduct and, uh, check with the operations. And wherever those deductions can be in order to have balanced budget, that will be having public hearings only the tenth. And the, the next one, it was scheduled on the seventeenth, I think there's still seventeen or nineteen, we need to agree so that the, uh, publications can go forward. Are we meeting on the seventeenth or are we meeting on the seven, on the nineteenth? For second public hearing and adoption of the budget. Seventeenth or the nineteenth, we don't go beyond that. If we have to advertise it, yes. So we have to agree now, are we meeting on the seventeenth? The first public hearing is on the tenth, that one is scheduled.
I think we already, we already spoke, spoken about meeting on the seventeenth.
The seventeenth is election day.
Yeah, but we still said that we have council meetings on election. Like, that was part of the conversation.
Councilmember Becker, did you then take action?
So we would need a vote to, uh, establish a special call meeting for September seventeenth.
I'm sorry, I, I have more discussion actually. Where, where will we have the meeting on the seventeenth?
Michael here. For sure you could have it here, we could look into.
We're having a full council meeting or we just having a meeting on the.
I think that would just be a hearing.
Um, can we also have our U R A meeting that day?
You can have that meeting before or you can have that day, that one, I will leave you to that one.
I will attend a motion for that date.
Councilwoman Brown has a question.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Isn't the city hall closed, our employees are off, right?
For your.
Not the seventeenth.
That's the.
Okay, okay, okay.
I move that we, um, have our council, our public hearing on September seventeen and also the U R A meeting on September seventeen.
Well, we, we may need to pull the U R A meeting because I need to get with the finance people we're, we're working with and make sure we can have the bond and other materials to be by that day.
All right, well, I'm in, I, I withdraw my motion and then I move that we have our, um, budget public hearing meeting on September seventeen.
Probably move the second with a discussion, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I agree with, uh, the notion that, uh, Councilwoman Willis is trying to make to have the U R A meeting come that same day. So I just want to ask if it's possible that we find out in the future, uh, in the near future enough, with enough time to advertise, can we still have both of those meetings on the same day?
If you can postpone this vote for maybe ten minutes, I can contact who I need to contact and see if they can make it work. If you're willing to table this for ten minutes.
Right now.
Wait, wait.
Just cancel it after the fact? Yeah, we can do that.
What are you suggesting?
Um, if you go ahead and take action to be able to authorize us to hold both meetings at the same time, and then if the schedules don't work out for the second one, you've alre, you know, you've given authorization and if it doesn't work out, administrative, I need to counsel that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I need to withdraw my motion and then make another motion. The, the motion I made originally, which was to have a, uh, public hearing and a U R A meeting on September seventeen.
Probably move the second, Mr. Khalid, it's a discussion. As author of the election day resolution, it was my intention that we consider that elections are sacred and that we don't meet on election day. I understand that we're up against a time crunch, so I'm not going to push the issue now. But I will be bringing back an amendment to the resolution. And I would just like for us, in our three hundred sixty-five day calendar, we only have elections like four or five times, we should be able to pick meetings that are not on election days. And particularly when we're asking our voters to go out and pick the next Fulton County Commissioner. That's going to affect our budget, a part of our budget area is, is, is about that. So, um, I just, I'm just registering my objection and that's it. Hey, Ms. Willis.
And I, I respect, um, what you're doing, uh, Councilmember Khalid, and I supported your ordinance. But nobody had any idea Commissioner Darnell was going to die and we were going to have an election on September seventeen. And so in life, there are going to be unforeseen circumstances, and this is one of them, that we're going to have to deal with. And so there are going to be times that we can't control certain things. And so this is one of those times. And we got to get the work of the people done. And so I would like to establish the time for the, uh, meeting September seventeen to, uh, be at either two or three P M.
You make an amendment here for your.
Yes, well, we need to establish a time. So, um, I'm, I would like to make an amendment for it to be September seventeen. U R A and, um, budget hearing, um, starting at two P M.
Uh, probably, we had a motion on the floor and that's reflected. We're in discussion now. Can she amend that?
Yeah, it's her motion, so she can modify it.
All right, good. Ms. Gilier?
Why is the seventeenth sacred? Why can't we do the tenth, the, the twelfth, the some other date? Why do we have to do that day?
Well.
Then how, you said that there's.
Had to mention, we've been on record saying the seventeenth.
Right.
We can always make a change if you can.
But he just said.
So that's the only day.
Seventeenth is the nearest, but you can go ahead and going ahead, you can get beyond twenty because if there's. So the only other day we have been, if we had missed seventeen, would be nineteen.
And, and so we could very easily do the eighteenth, right? So the seventeenth is not sacred, that's my point.
Any day, as long as it's not beyond nineteen.
Exactly.
All right. Well, let me carry the motion, it's on the floor. All those in favor? All those in favor?
We've been on record for the seventeenth.
Okay, that, that fails, we lack a full vote.
So are you going to make a motion for it to be on eighteen?
I'll make a motion if we do it on the eighteenth until court. The court removes the second, any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor? That passes? Yes, sir.
Have the hearing on tenth and have the hearing on the eighteenth. We proceed with the presentation, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Before beginning my presentation, I would like to acknowledge and, uh, thank you Jacobs for the support that they provide to the Public Works Department. And Mr. Glover and Minister Good are here. Public Works, uh, just wanted to begin the presentation by telling you what Public Works is all about. I know, you know their details, but as you know, everything happens in Public Works. The tree falls down, we got to be there. The road closes, we got to be there. Anything that happens, Public Works has to support our community. Where we are, what does Public Works do? It is engineering, where we do TS plus and capital projects, and we'll go in more detail on the following slides. Construction operations and maintenance, anything that the roads, potholes, storm drainage, related to the right way, where Jacobs provides the systems. Traffic operations, the signals, the signs, the school signs, the fifty-two, uh, the four, the forty-seven traffic signals that we got throughout the city, Jacobs provides the services. Solving waste, we're providing services in conjunction of Jacobs as well. Facilities, we have about thirty-two facilities that Public Works is in charge of and, and, and the fleet department or division that.
or division that Public Works is in charge as well. We have about at this at this point, two hundred, two hundred and twenty-eight vehicles. And we are forecasting to have about two sixty in the near future. Key daily rules and the highlights. Our keep community safe, secure and set and satisfied with increased accountability and responsiveness to citizens. Implement and be proactive with preventive maintenance. And on the right side, you have a full hand of activities that each section does it, such as uh planning and engineering, what they do, T S plus, what kind of project we have, traffic we have, construction operations, traffic operations, facilities, fleet, solid waste, as well as street lights. A full, full hand of main activities that Public Works is responsible for. Our goals. We want to continue maintaining about two hundred and six miles right away every every four weeks. Maintain our schools uh flash signals on the best conditions that we have. We currently updated those signals like any other city has done throughout the state of Georgia. We have brand new equipment that we should have no issues for the next three years. We would like to increase residential solid waste compliance at least seventy percent. Our last report indicates that we are at sixty-two percent. We started at forty-eight percent, forty-nine percent, and now we are sixty-two. And I believe throughout this uh massive exercise that we are experiencing, we might be reaching very, very quickly to the seventy percent. We we're looking into implementing the twenty twenty L M E C projects. L M E C is a, it's a funding, it's a grant that Georgia DOT provides to all the cities in a yearly basis. The cities are supposed to provide a thirty percent match for that exercise. With that, I'll be coming back to the city, uh to the council and present uh related projects on how we can utilize those funds. So we can mitigate the issues that we have on our roads that need deep bay repairs, roads that need urgently uh resurfacing, uh to be resurfaced, subdivisions that that were not resurfaced from the past uh twenty years that were not included on the T S plus, some subdivisions that are still in need of toppings and some other subdivisions that they still need some uh uh, I mean such a need of new paving. Typically, the roads have to be resurfaced every seventy years and a quick way how to look at is when you do an old, an old change to your vehicle, if you don't do it, you you end up buying a new vehicle. We don't want to get to a condition, unfortunately, in the past, I don't want to mention anything else, but in the past, the attention to Public Works not was not given at the same level that the cities do it. We want to obtain our L A P certification. I think we're going to be one of the cities in the city of South Fulton that is about to accomplish that that I in a very short time. Once we accomplish that certification, we're going to be able to contract directly with Georgia DOT as well as going to A R C and request for funding on new projects that we have. In the past, we're still under the arm of Fulton County. We are uh finalizing some contract executions and so on, so everything's going to end same. I forecast that by September, we should be L A P certified. Capital expenses by pro, by program. I'll I'll go and move this a little farther. Capital expenses by program. On the pie chart, what we requesting to us, we're requesting the immediate needs for the city of South Fulton. We have about two point seven million dollars for capital projects, which at best majority have federal funding on that. And for twenty twenty, we have about eighteen million dollars for T S plus projects. I will go in more detail on the subsequent pages of what encompasses T S plus and capital projects. With regards to capital projects.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
This gravel road, hard road, is that four or three? No, because this is a tight road. Part that needs to be paved, I think it's on four.
It's four. Yes, it is, it is four.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we'll make corrections. The district we put for you like as a, as a reference, if we made a mistake, we'll ensure to make corrections. With regards to uh capital projects, two point seven, seventy million dollars, which is only the twenty percent match that we are responsible for projects that have federal funds. The eighty percent, we worked that out with our, with finance, will be borrowed, but we're gonna get it back anyway. Once we deliver the project, we'll, we'll, we'll invest, we pay, and then we'll get the reimbursements back from Georgia DOT. We got three bridges that I and the designer right away faces. We need to uh move with those projects so we can provide information to A R C and go forward to request funds for right of way and construction on those projects. While we don't move those projects, it's very hard to say when we're gonna be doing it. Luckily, the, we are in the ultimate uh phases of contract executions between Fulton County and the city of, the city of South Fulton to our attorney. With regards to, we have also a culvert replacement. The reason why Cascade Road over a branch of the, of Utah Creek is closed. Uh we closed that road due to safety reasons. We must remove with the project very quickly. It is in our intention that as soon as the contracts are in place, we're moving back to design. The, the projects are actually at about seventy percent design. And we should be in a position to move a little faster once the contracts are in place. So those funding of what you see a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, it will help somehow to complete the design. Uh hopefully, complete the right way because we don't have many parcels to acquire and a little money to start with the construction. But we're gonna leverage this, the Georgia DOT to give us additional funding. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to succeed and get that done in two thousand and eighteen. With regards to sidewalks.
Nineteen nineteen.
Uh I'm sorry, two thousand, two thousand twenty.
Twenty.
Yes. With regards to sidewalks and intersection improvements. New Hope Road is in twenty twenty-two construction uh program by A R C. We are in the design phase, it's advanced. We were in about sixty percent of right of way acquisition. We need to complete that and the funding that you see is for that just section of the ten percent. Old National Highway sidewalks phase two, the project is almost complete. However, we must start with the right of way acquisition of the project. So we need those funding to start somehow, complete the design and start buying the right of way and move forward for with the subsequent phases. The Stone Hotel, Button Road, there's a dual runabout where we need the funding. The four forty-seven, eight thirty-six is the twenty percent match of the entire construction and utility of the project. That project I was saw that we might have to rebate. Once we obtain our, our L A P, we'll have to rebate that and hopefully come back with the same dollar amount. And the second, and the subsequent uh list of projects.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, mayor.
No, we got a list.
I just wanted to ask, uh.
You want me to go back?
Yeah, the, the screen for clarity about the old national sidewalks you said, was that district?
Why don't we, if we could do about, maybe, uh once you get, get your question, we'll go back to it. Right? Okay, good. I'll put you on this.
And the projects that are not federal funded, but that's what we heard from the community. We have lots of roads that be, that are in need of to be resurfaced, but I think we do deep bay repairs for those roads. It will hold it until we get in a better budget situation of being able to do more. The gravel road, a hall road, we heard so many things on, on, on the hall road. And that will allow the funding that you see on, on the booklet, it will allow to commence design only. So at that point, once the, the budget's approved, we still have to procure for design, hopefully design twenty twenty uh design of that project.
We got a, we got a thing there.
Okay. Uh with regards to um, the subsequent project will be. I'm sorry, I I missed to mention the Fable Road upgrade is the last project on sidewalk, sidewalking and intersection improvements. That project is ready, ready as well, we just need to acquire two more parcels and encompasses the intersection improvements of Fable Road and Cascade Road, sidewalks and the replacement of two corridors at Utah Creek, south and north. The, the funding that we're looking at is to com, to commence the project and then hopefully at the, at the following, next year, we should be able to complete, they needed, they needed funds for this project. Going back to uh, the next page will be road paving and resurfacing. As, as I mentioned before, sixty-two thousand five hundred for deep bay repairs, uh a hundred thousand dollars to commence design of, of the gravel road, a hall road, and an injection of funding for subdivision toppings that are in a high, a high demand of a hundred seventeen five hundred. Listed below, that will be the L M E C. That's the thirty percent match that it is needed in a yearly basis for, for us. So we'll receive about one point two million dollars, we might receive a little more and it depends how the, how the state, the state funds. But it's, it's an average of what we need. So with those funding, I'll be coming back to you by before November with a, with a comprehensive list of how we're gonna use L M E C and leverage what we have and how many corridors and other subdivisions we can do with those files. It's street lights. Street lights is in high demand.
Yes.
It's a high demand, but in order to stay within budget and not have to pay others to inventory the lights for us, we came out and met with each of you, received your, your comments. And uh we were able to sketch with, with Georgia Power and Graystone. So they're gonna do the inventory for us and they're gonna provide us an estimated cost of what would cost the works that we provide to them. Right now, we have about under nine thousand street lights currently for the city of South Fulton. So they're one hundred thirty thousand, one oh five, and you see the lights come out with the distant lights throughout the city of South Fulton in two thousand twenty. The subsequent stages, uh you can see uh the layout of Button Road and Stone Hotel, a dual runabout at, at Button Road and Stone Hotel, a well-designed project, much needed project, the only project in the state of Georgia with two road, two dual runabouts. The subsequent project is sidewalks on all national highway. You can see it's even standard by professional engineers completed the project, but we must complete the right of way acquisition before we can go into construction. But the design is pretty much completed, but we need that phase of, of the right of way acquisition. I want you to have, keep in mind that as of, as of October of two thousand and eighteen, everything ceased in Fulton County, everything ceased with the projects because we didn't have funding, we didn't have no authority, we didn't have contracts and so on. We are just coming back to get those contracts. So we lost one year of activity on all those federal funded projects. The subsequent project is the, the sidewalks on Fable Road, the intersection improvement, the replacement of two corridors, as I stated before. And that will allow us to continue from Phase One, that we did on Fable Road, where we updated the utility strength at Fable Road and we put in wider sidewalks along that corridor. Phase two will be a break project, the city of Atlanta also has calculation to tap into that project from, from the warmer section going forward to the city. It will be a good project and it will be a good way to work with our partners, with all the cities. The subsequent project is the new whole sidewalks. It's a project that as you can see is almost complete, but we must finalize the right of way acquisition for the project. With regards to T S plus, an investment of about eighteen million dollars. Done a lot from two thousand eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, uh by two thousand nineteen, where in the last stages of getting those contracts in place, we get late for two thousand nineteen. What you see right here is for two thousand twenty. So most likely, we'll be going forward with certain projects, but the other projects that happen in different phases such as operational safety improvements. Please move to. Those projects will go to design, some kind of design and will start, we go with that particular phase and then we'll move along uh at subsequent years. According to T S plus guidelines, we must have, have some kind of commitment on all those projects that we have. Uh each project has funding allocated with projected base in the two thousand sixteen estimates. Next page, please. With regards to bridges and the T S plus, about six hundred and eight thousand dollars. Uh we have two bridges right there, uh and a one quick response and some other funding allocated to deliver the project. We're also working with the Georgia DOT and we've been very likely to, to come up with some execution of some project and not cause the city of South Fulton. As you remember, we have thickly assigned a prior agreement with G dot reference, in reference to the side of Morning Creek. So we might be able to get some, some money right there and not cause the city of South Fulton.
Um, Mr. Mayor's point of order. Do you know road that can't freak through the terrace district too, yeah?
Just a correction.
Thank you, ma'am. The following page. We go to Public Works operation, so we're done with the capital projects and T S plus, and we're starting looking at operation. What we're looking at is a project of six point five, six point six million dollars for transportation. Under our contract with Jacobs, we have about five point seven seventy-one, four sixty-three. What does that look to us? It is traffic signal maintenance, traffic column assessments, school signal maintenance, site disassembling vegetation and so on, and the rest of documentation as well as the M S four. Under that contract, we have a base compensation of four point nine million dollars and a maintenance funding of seven hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. With the maintenance funding, that's what we do, everything that requires to maintain our road. The street lights, seven hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. Last year, we got closer to six hundred thousand dollars for just paying and consumption. So we're forecasting seven, seven hundred thirty-two thousand dollars to do it works. And G I services that in transportation, if you don't have a G I service, it, it is not an idea not to have G I services because we rely tremendously with G I services. Capital things by the front. And under, and the general service. It's not a good part, we have allocated about one point five million dollars for fleet, one forty, one hundred forty-nine thousand, for solid waste, four hundred ninety thousand, and for fire, four hundred forty-two thousand. I'll do this in the project and gap for those. Just, at the next page, please. General service, detailed information on how those partner will be spent, a hundred forty-nine thousand dollars. All vehicles, eighty-one thousand, six fifty-seven, that will allow us, our technicians to move from one A to one B and to move sometimes the full crew from allocation to non-allocation. For buildings, as you know, we're always in need of assistance or funding to upgrade what, what we have. A short, a short funding of three thousand dollars. Equipment for fleet, we barely have the basics. But we think I would, I have an additional equipment listed below, which should help out to the current uh technicians that we have for fleet and being able to do more, more things for the city. Next page, please. General service, the parts. It, it is listed at each location. I want to, I want to make sure that in two thousand sixteen, Fulton County Command. I wanna, I wanna make sure that in two thousand sixteen, Fulton County came up and did a full assessment of the thirty-two facilities that we own now in the city of South Fulton. The forecast update was about twelve million dollar plus. So we have facilities that are in such a need of sometimes to redone it. So what you see right here is just an injection fund to keep those facilities moving. So, one point five million dollars for all those facilities that are leased by itself, but we must follow that recommendation that was done in two thousand sixteen, to the point that if you update on two thousand sixteen to today, I'm sure they take it a hike. We have a, I have a huge book on each part with every detailed information of what it requires. Like, please, please. For fire station, four hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred seventeen, it follows the same recommendation. As you know, we're fixing fire station one, and we're fixing fire station seventeen. It is my goal, and the goal of Public Works, to complete those things, knowing that the end of September.
Miss, point of order, Mr. Mayor. Fire station three, is that on Stonewall Town?
Yes.
That's District Three, that's not District Four.
Next page, please. General service, proposal for structural improvements, four point one million dollars. We're allocating two hundred thousand dollars, and we're protecting to spare some for P F and capital projects. We have guardrails with Georgia DOT, impossible to pay for some landscape in the line. And the reason of this, the reason that we have right there is that, on guardrails, you have about thirty thousand dollars for absolute guardrails that we started to open camera. We paid about thirty thousand dollars. It's not gonna cost the city of South Fulton anything for the construction, but Georgia DOT requested additional design in order for them to let those projects to, to construction. So investing thirty thousand dollars on that will be a, a win-win situation for the city of South Fulton. We'll have about twelve guardrail locations for thirty thousand dollars, it's a, it's a win-win situation. Repairs still build, uh, maintenance building. Last year, we have two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we run that very fast. Every minute, and we're sitting right here, the bathrooms are wrong, the lights are on, the doors are on, we are running back and forth with it, minimal stuff that we have, and we believe that increasing that maintenance on repairs and maintenance will allow us to be more responsive and to ask, do the work that we need in that time of gap. Baseball maintenance and repairs, forecasted about two hundred six. We already surplus what we had last year of four hundred thousand dollars for baseball maintenance. So six hundred thousand dollars i- is a funding that you should, we should be within that budget. General liability, that's by itself, rental and land facilities, nine hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, is for all the rentals that we have, to include, we forecasted for the new, uh, safety building that we have. And you have utility bills, a six hundred seventy-five thousand, that's split amongst those, those bills. All you budget books are detailed information that you have line by line on that. Then cleaning services and stove services, and small tools uniform travel, which is minor dollar amounts listed on that. Next, please. Solid waste, and the solid waste, uh, we have the American operation, forecasted about three hundred thousand dollars and about one hundred fifty thousand dollars for amnesty day. That's, that would be for two, twice a year, uh, twice a year for amnesty day, air professional services, that's always needed. Those findings, it is, it is a, a revenue finding that we're for, uh, hoping that we'll stay with that budget. Next, please. After you heard all, all that we have to do for, for public works, what we're looking at personnel, but division, our transportation, we have so many things that need to be done, I cannot do by myself, I think I need some help, and I will appreciate you, your support for executive director, and land administrator, where we have, we're gonna be acquired right away. We own thirty-three facilities, we must know what to do with those facilities, we must deal and report all those problems, and we must certify all of our land that we have. The land administrator will be doing different things, he has to work with G I S, ensure that everything that we do is properly heated and, and in place. Our one public work program manager, which will help tremendously with all the needs that we have as a city, we have a presence at A R C, we have a presence at Lamar, we have a presence at Georgia DOT, we have a presence for the community, are with you all, with all the project, program, public meetings that we have, it is extensive. With regards to general service, we will approve one service technician. We have currently one maintenance manager and two service technicians. You have thirty-two facilities. We don't have plumbers, we don't have electricians, we don't have personnel that can help us out to deliver the project much quicker. And the fleet, we have two bacon fleet mechanics, we're hoping that fill those, we streamline the process, and we'll have one maintenance manager and three fleet mechanics. And one service coordinator that has to do every, everything with the tanks, there's all the procurement paper that, that has to be done. Next, next, please. The funding needs, because the bodywork proposed and short to meet the city of South Fulton budget, but we were not able to provide to you, what else do we need? Bridge maintenance, we have fifty-one facilities. It is done based on a bi-year only inspection by the Georgia DOT. Perhaps Cascade, that branch of Utah Creek, now it's ready at one, which is, that's the reason why we closed. So we have a full report that tells us that the conditions of those bridges. Some of them, we might be able to do in, in-house, but some of them, it takes a while to get to, to get to the point where we can do this stuff. So one point five million dollars, I, I believe we should be able to exceed the requirement from Georgia DOT. Detention part, we haven't, we haven't received a response yet on how to act in those detention parts. By the time continues growing, everything grows, that's basically grows, water stays, we must comply with the MS four, we must comply with many things, uh, and the appearance of the city of South Fulton. Is there road, right away maintenance, forty-five miles, there are two things, the community wants us to maintain those road, those roads, the state has every six weeks, we do every whole week for the city of South Fulton. If we want to do by ourselves, it's a way to do it, but it's a cost allocated to that. Lastly, the city of South Fulton has different locations, and I wanted to list it, because they're a road median. S K Row is the only row, the only corridor that has pedestrian streets, decorative pedestrian streets, that we took it over in the past. Now, the median was done, but we don't wanna just maintain that landscape without having a proper landscape plan. Maintaining and just going, we need a cut grass, it doesn't do the work, but if you have a proper landscape design, then we can subcontract to main, to maintain those, those li, so, that landscape. And it's a different story to have a plan, then have been maintained in the course of that plan. That dollar amount is a forecast just for design. Then how we wanna maintain, it varies, so, because it goes to the summer every two weeks, to the fall, it goes a little higher, you wanna do once a month, you wanna, and so on. But behind the scenes, we started to talk to them, saying, what will be the cost? How can we handle this stuff? But I just wanted to bring up to you the needs, the needs of the city of South Fulton, if you wanna take it to the city of South Fulton at a different level. With regards to personnel, it is my recommendation that, that the city of South Fulton requires a general service manager. You have thirty-three detention, uh, thirty-three facilities that were done and studied by a group of, especially engineers and architects, who have come up with the needs for the city of South Fulton. Not, not to have a general manager that can oversee what are the needs for those facilities, and what kind of capital improvement we can do for those facilities. It is not a good idea. We have so many needs on general, for general service technician, we only have one, you'll have, you're gonna have three. It would be great to have at least four people, so you can split two and two when the needs are, or we can do preventive maintenance for all the facilities that we have. And then lastly, the Cascade, Pomelo, Rich, Rich Road, Sea, Sea Grove runabout, those lights, when the state did it for us, and that's something that we corrected. The state subcontracted with a private contractor and paid those lights. Now they don't work. So we end up hiring to take of a private electrician contractor, they cost us money. But we cannot do that in a, in a year, in a yearly, or in a deal, in a needed basis. So we discussed with, uh, Greystone, and they are willing to take over this, their own system and their, their own design, and we pay them that amount of money. So if the lights don't work, we call them up, we don't have to be paying private contractor to fix. And, uh, my last request to you all is an asset management tool. It is my recommendation that we look into the citywide for fleet, for facility, for transport district structure, to have an asset management tool. If we wanna be at a different level, we must have that stuff. That will help us out to be in place, so perhaps next year, I don't have to provide all this stuff, I just have to use my asset management tool and tell you what we spend the money, how we spend, and what are the needs. With that, I'll be, will, uh, glad to respond any questions that you have.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Valenzuela. We will try with Mr. Brown and Mr. Baker and Mr. Skelton.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a number of questions. First, what is the projected timeline? And I know it was unexpected, the term could happen to close Cascade before that would be reopened, and, um, you talked in your presentation about forty-seven traffic signals around schools. Do schools have any responsible, responsibility for that at all?
All your responsibility, they, they have it, when they build a new school, to let know the school here, so the cities are responsible for the school planning.
Okay. And, um, one of the things you talked about was Greystone and Georgia Power doing, um, assessment of our lighting, and currently, we have about nine thousand streetlights. Are they, um, also looking, or I wanna suggest is that they look at their utility boxes in our city, 'cause I've noticed that a number of them are damaged, and I don't know if they have any kind of sensors or technology can deal with, I don't know, people are trying to get copper out of them or what. If you ride around, you'll see a lot of, you know, damaged utility boxes.
We have met, we joined the power, and we actually ride, uh, throughout the city of South Fulton in some areas, and we brought that, those issues back to them, and they, they are making provisions with Georgia Power. We didn't have a chance to, uh, to drive around with Greystone, but they're, they're aware of, of your concerns as well.
And, um, I guess lastly, you know, I think the list of about six million, these are projects, we're just trying to honor that we're on the books from Fulton County, pretty much. This is that fund that you referenced, that we rotate money in and out to get the project done, so we wouldn't lose the federal money, like the sidewalk projects and all that, is accurate?
That's right, ma'am.
Okay.
Just, I, I missed one, a question to you on the cascade, how long is it gonna be open, or when can we project to be open? The intention is that as soon as the contract is executed, with Fulton, Fulton, holding those contracts now, Ben Doak have executed, the city executed, now it's Fulton to execute. As soon as we receive those, we're gonna resume activities, and as, this project will be our primary project to go, and the intention is to go ahead and already have anything that has to be pre-made, we're gonna have it pre-made. So by the time the design and we acquire the rightsway, we're ready to go, and those boxes are gonna be pre-cut, it's, it's gonna be dropped out in, in place, because those are can't, uh, can't span materials, so we'll be ahead of the time. I don't project more than twelve months.
Yeah, it's important because, you know, we give...
We get so many calls about that.
Where their, where their, where their businesses been cut by twenty percent or more. I think you guys are playing...
And, um, lastly, I hope we're coordinating also with G-DAT, because they started their round, the state started their roundabout project, and today, Hamilton Road was closed. So when you're trying to navigate, you know, when, when, when New Hope is the cut through, and now Hamilton Road, you can't even get past Promenade Oaks, you know, they, they need to communicate better, if you're not aware, with our department, because I, I can imagine now with school letting out and everything, I bet you it's a nightmare, 'cause you literally cannot go down Hamilton Road.
Right, it had, what happens is that, uh, apparently, there was a tree that fell. So the fire station was around there, and that was the reason of a quick closure of the, but the road's open now.
Okay. They, oh, they opened it back up now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Baker?
Okay, I, I just want you to go back to the sidewalks or national area where you were saying you needed to have, uh, you were probably gonna have to do a rebid. Last one was about two years ago. Is it gonna be more than that seventy-five thousand dollars because of that, or, and also, is that rebid process gonna start, uh, now?
You have referenced it to the, to the all-national highway Phase Two, I think that's what you wanted to say.
Correct.
The, the prior statement was for the, uh, Button Road and Stone Hotel, where, where Fulton County received bids for those, but now A R C and G-DAT saying, now that you're gonna take over the project and you are L A P qualified, then you must rebid that project. But with regards to your project, we're gonna resume activities and continue with the design. And the most important thing is, is start the rights to acquisition, so we, so we can certify the rights to acquisition and then let construction start.
So, design, I know last year when we were here, was supposed to be completed.
The, the project is almost complete, but we haven't started the, the rights to acquisition.
Everything stopped in October.
So we stopped in October, last year. So we, I, I run, if we didn't have to stop, probably the rights to acquisition was gonna be completed, I would be in already a better position to let the project to construction.
You had to stop during the transition period, when Fulton County transitioned to us, they did not complete the contracts and transition all of those activities. Those are the contracts that have just come back before you over the last few months, which stopped the progress on the work. So now that we have control over it, and the funding that's proposed in the budget, it will resume.
So we're here by my schedule, 'cause they took their ball and went home.
Yes. So, we're completing with design, still?
So, you go to design after a point, you cannot go past rights to acquisition, okay? You go primary design, you start final design, once you start, you have to do your rights to plans, so they can start committing with rights to acquisition, but you don't wanna complete the design, because during the rights to acquisition stage or phase, there are changes. So at that point, we complete, by the time they are about to certify the rights to acquisition, we complete also the project, the design.
When would our residency sidewalks face?
It, it is projected for two thousand twenty-one, that's where the federal funds are allocated for. So two thousand twenty-one fiscal year, where the state commence in July twenty twenty. So it's very likely, if everything works out to our, all our contracts, and we move very quickly, it's feasible that, uh, but, uh, and, you know, in the spring of twenty twenty-one, it's feasible that this project can start.
Do you like one, Mr. Baker?
In the spring of twenty twenty-one?
Right, because the project's actually, you know, there's, there's a gap of, of submitted for approval for construction landings, it takes about six months just for the state to get everything rolling. After we provide to them the rights to acquisition, certification, now the final plan approvals, then that process by itself, so the state will, will have time, if we leave the project in twenty twenty-one, we will have time after March of two thousand twenty-one to get everything rolling. So, but we must admit, everything completed to the state by October of twenty twenty. So you have that six-month gap that is the contract executions, not to proceed from the state, and us being able to, to start moving with the, with the project.
Yes, sir.
And I wanna chime in, because every time over the years I've been quiet about this project, it's, it's always been about right-of-way acquisition. What I'm hearing now, what I'm hearing is that that process really hasn't started. Uh, and if we're gonna start that project, I, I'm gonna say a word that people don't like to hear. And if we're gonna start that project, I'm gonna say a word that people don't like to hear, and it's eminent domain. Because this is a, this is definitely a, a project of public interest. And I just wanna get past the, the, we haven't talked to the people and gotten a lay-in yet, because that's what I've been hearing, for years. You know, we're trying to acquire it right-of-way, we're trying to acquire it right-of-way. And I'm here to this day and seeing like we haven't done it. So I wanted to.
No, no, I, I'm glad you said that, because I think that some of our residents were thinking that this design phase was over, and I understand the pause that you talked about, but at the same time, is there anything that could be done on our end to expedite that?
The only thing, get those contracts out, commence the rightsway acquisition, put multiple people to work on the rightsway acquisition, and then that will help us out. I hope that G-Da gets an approval in a timely manner for us. If the sidewalks, it's on issue.
Keeping in mind, this is a public good now. All right, Mr. Gilley?
I have several things. One of them is the retention ponds, and there are thirty-three of them. Are any of them in subdivisions? Are these just retention ponds that are in a right-of-way and something that the city is responsible for maintaining?
That's, that's a good question. We weren't able to obtain how actually Fulton County grandfathered those projects, those detention ponds. But the majority of those are within subdivisions. Are within older subdivisions. And it's my understanding that, that you have HOAs back then, and around, I think, two thousand and six or so, Fulton County took the decision to maintain those, and from that point on, nobody else was able to, everybody, every, all the new subdivision was able to maintain their own detention pond.
So these thirty-three represent the old subdivisions, is that what you're saying?
Yes, very much, ma'am.
All right, I looked at the list of subdivisions under T-spots. And there are three that we need to talk about, because I know all the subdivisions in my district. There is no Big Creek. There is no Park, Park Lane Woods. That might be Rivertown, Mel's, but there is no Park Lane Woods. And Nassau Village might have been an old name for one off of Cal Eden Road. But right now, there is no Nassau Village, so let's sit down and talk about that.
Absolutely, because remember, those subdivisions, we're putting the list based on actual plots that we have, and they are older plots. And then I'll be glad to ensure that we, this time, we don't wanna leave no roads within a subdivision. And, but it is a lot.
But those three definitely don't exist. And then the other one is, I saw here under, under T-spots, in quick response. I saw Hunter Road, and I saw resurfacing, with three hundred and twenty-three thousand. So as the city, we need to come up with a policy that is, that looks something like this. This particular road or street or whatever is owned partially by the city of South Fulton, and partially by Union City. We need to partner, so that you can do your share, and we can do our share. Hunter Road is one of those roads.
And that's my district, we did that.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We've done that stuff, I didn't, you know, if I have to list every detail, the list will be huge. But, believe me, I never mind, but we're not spending any, we're not spending a dime on City of South Fulton or another city.
Okay, good.
Yes.
That was just a real concern about the city. And then the other thing is, so I looked at the budget. And when I looked at the budget, I saw that in the professional line, there is a request to increase it by six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. In the professional line. So in the professional line, does that only include our contract with Jacobs? Or does it include that and some other professional services?
And a professional service doesn't include Jacobs. Jacobs has maintained at the same level, besides their contract obligation.
So where are they in the budget?
The rest of the, of the inclusions for professional services, let me go back to them. So you, you have right there professional services, five point seven seven one, which is strictly for Jacobs. And then you have miscellaneous fifty thousand for general ser, for G I S.
I'm not talking about that one, I was just talking about professional services, so. I compared the recommendation for twenty twenty with the amended budget for twenty nineteen, and the increase to six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. So I'm wondering why is it being increased by six ninety-eight?
All those positions you just made?
No, no, no. Go ahead, no, it's not, that's, I'm answering that.
Okay, okay. Under Jacobs contract, originally it was four hundred, four million nine fifty-four. And then they have a four percent max increase, that comes to five million one thirty-eight zero zero eight. Then we have a maintenance fund of seven ninety-five, six, seven percent. So you actually, when you add both of them, it's five point nine and change. And what we're listing here is five point seven seven one.
Okay, he answered that for me, thank you. G I S service. And so I'm wondering, since we have a, a G I S person, and I know that we're asking to add on to that person, G I S analyst, is there any opportunity for us to do G I S in-house? For, I think most of what the G I S manager does relates to planning. And is there an opportunity to just put it under one, in one section? To have G I S, you know, just be, wherever it's gonna be, whether it, whether it stays where it is, goes back under planning, goes under I T, or wherever it goes. It would seem to me that there would be an opportunity for us to just have one G I S.
You stand correct. It's a good idea to have it in one place. All I can tell you is that for transportation, for public works, it is heavily needed, G I S services.
Okay, okay, that's, that's, that's okay. And then the other thing is that in this fiscal year, you have three positions, and you're asking to up, up it by two, which would give you five. But then when you look at the personnel costs, it looks weird, because you're asking for two additional positions, but the salary amount that you're asking for decreased. I don't understand.
Right. It, it is aware how finance to tabulate their funds. They have it breaking down into public work on one side, and then under general services on the other side. And I think what it was approved is for four positions, and two that I'm still hoping that will be included in it.
Okay, so, so bear with me, I'll have to.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, streetlights.
I think he wants, he should give you some clarity on that delineation, because some of those positions were the park maintenance staff, right? For the general, general services side.
We split that already.
Oh, you already, okay, you're on topic, okay.
So, so, um, one, one other thing is that streetlights went up from three hundred thousand to seven hundred and thirty-two. But then, in general services, they have streetlights for four hundred thousand, so why all, so that's over a million dollars. So why?
We, what we're asking for public works is just for the streetlights. The other lights are the pays for the services that parks has, fire station have, for all the, for the only two, thirty-two facilities that we have. So those are bills that I don't even see it, but those are just bills to pay those facilities.
So, what staff does Jacobs provide?
Jacobs provides the construction and operation maintenance. With regards to, to me, I'll break that down into construction operations and traffic operations. But if I wanna enhance a bit more on what they actually do at the, from the general point of view, I'm not gonna be specific, but I can share with you some of the main functions. Well, I'll give you from my, top of my head. Anything done with traffic operations. The signals, the signs, the striding, the rebuild of plants, the traffic element reviews, aesthetics. When we need, a light goes out in the middle of the night, they come back and make that operable. When it goes to construction operations, the potholes, the rightsway maintenance.
Okay, okay.
The deep base repairs.
Okay, okay, I got it. Last thing, last, this is absolutely the last thing. So I'm looking at the chart. And the chart says permitting and building services division. So we already have a permitting division that's currently under economic development. So to me, is another opportunity for there to be, one, permitting whatever department or office or whatever that does different things.
That's a typo, ma'am, I think.
Sixty-two, basically.
Sixty-two. It says permitting and.
So, destination is up, forty-sixty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's Mr. Fight's fault.
I'm looking at the wrong page. I take it back. I take it back, Mr. Valenzuela.
Yeah, right, that's good, ma'am. You, you almost surprised me.
I take it back, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Kamee?
I got a couple things too. So first, I, I just wanna echo Dr. Rawls, I actually wanna amplify Dr. Rawls' com, comment. I, I also think that we should include in this negotiation around utility boxes, A T and T, they're, they, they have several utility boxes in, in old neighborhoods as well. And some of them are, some of them are messed. I used to like working those boxes, so I always look at them. Some of the, the doors are open and the wires are hanging out. It's a, it's a reason that people have problems with their e-commerce service and things like that. And it, and it's their responsibility to maintain those boxes. Streetlights, we talked about streetlights. The new streetlights are L E D lights?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Are they solar-powered lights?
No.
Are we, have we looked into that? Is that not an option?
At this point, you know, it's Georgia Power and Greystone, we discussed with them, and they advise us that the technology is not at that point, that L E D is much powerful and less expensive than solar lights.
I, I mean, I'm sure.
Right, with time.
That the power company, who charges us a power bill, isn't it just in us having solar-powered lights? But I think that, 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 that might be something that we need to look in more aggressively than they're looking into. Yes, sir.
Mr. Valenzuela? Listen, he's, he's correct.
Yes.
Because in Florida, streetlights are solar-powered. When I went to U S Conference of Mayor's in Honolulu, everything is solar-powered. So you're right, you don't wanna give back to, to the power company, but it's something we need to strongly look at. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
I have these numbers, they get more different. Fulton County. I just wanna make note for the people that are watching that this is, this is one of the reasons that we have issues with Fulton County. So we made these commitments to the voters, all of us together, that we were going to pave streets and sidewalks and do all these things. And then in twenty eighteen, like, they just stopped doing everything. And I just, I'm sure that we could have found a better way to transition these projects than to just stop doing them for a year. Specifically around the sidewalks. I am going to ask that you create some kind of town hall for Old National to explain to them what's going on with the sidewalks. Please make sure that Jill Lindsay is there as coordinator. Get with her and make sure that it works for her calendar. And, and because we have residents that just need to hear exactly what's going on, why this, why the stoppage happened, when they are going to see sidewalks. I mean, I, who knew that sidewalks needed so much design? I didn't. So, and I'm sure our residents don't either. The, you talked about having the, and so really, definitely do that, like, in the next, before the end of the year, I would like for us to have that town hall. You talked about the need for a general services manager to handle the public works project. Is that different than the facilities manager that we already have now?
There are two things. No offense to anybody. Facility maintenance, that's the key word. Facility maintenance manager than a facilities manager. I can't go on maintaining anything. But as a general manager, you look at it from a different perspective. You organize everything, you organize all this stuff, you bring a capital program. You bring, you bring other options on how we should do fire stations, parks, our facilities.
So you're not talking about maintenance, you're talking about new construction?
Our, all facilities are in a different, in a different space.
It's like a, it, it would be like a level up, so, versus the regular general maintenance of fixing and, and air conditioning.
So, 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 Mr. Walker that we have here now, what, what does he do?
He's all over. He's, he's actually, he's all over.
So you're saying you wanna split his job into two, one maintenance, one.
He will actually have to report to the general manager. So the general manager will be scheduling everything, and then we probably make the recommendations. We don't need to maintain repair fire station one, that needs to be turned down, and this is other options that we have.
And so, so explaining to me in this new thing, what will, what will Mr. Walker be doing and what will this other person be doing?
Mr. Walker will continue with all the needs. We get calls every day from parks, from fire stations. It doesn't work here, the water, the H P S C, the drop seal and drops here, the driveway is, is, it needs repairs. The flooring is not painted, the custole is not working. A housekeeping needs here, the budget for this, no, all kinds of stuff.
Okay, so, and so, I think this brings me to our friends Jacobs. Hi Jacobs. Are they doing the work? So are, are, are these managers managing the work that Jacobs would be doing? It's a different set of work.
Jacobs is not involved with facilities. Jacobs is not involved with transportation.
Okay, so they're only involved with transportation?
That's correct.
They, but they're, they do, they do, so you're not talking about even maintaining like storage bins or culverts or any of that, like, all of that would still be Jacobs?
Yes, that's correct. In other words, Jacobs, an easy way to put it is transportation is horizontal construction. Facilities is vertical construction.
Got you.
Jacobs doing all horizontal.
So, um, the repairs and maintenance, and the, which is five hundred thousand dollars, and the, is it an increase of five hundred thousand dollars or is that a total?
Total.
What is the increase?
Two hundred and fifty.
So it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase, and then the, what is, and then merk miles is three hundred thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Are these in the U R A, are these U R A?
Merk miles is, is a, is a separate type of revenue. So on the reports that we provide to you corollary on how merk miles is doing, and, no, I'm sorry, how the solid waste providers are doing, we have received about two hundred and forty thousand dollars to date. So those funds that we receive, they're not. So those funds that we receive in accordance of solid waste ordinance, it is to maintain solid waste programs such as Merck Miles, some, uh, the, the cost on solid waste and the repairs of some of the infrastructure that we have.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take them one at a time. There's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in maintenance. Is that in the URA budget or that's in the general fund?
The general fund.
Is that correct, Mr. Malazie? Okay, and then you're saying that we're generating two hundred and forty thousand dollars of revenue from...
Remember, we, we charge...
From like a service fee, infrastructure, whatever?
Right, five percent that was given in the dollar.
So that's generating two hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Today.
But the cost for Merck Miles is currently three hundred thousand dollars?
Approximately three hundred thousand dollars.
So we're losing sixty thousand dollars a year keeping Merck's miles?
No, the two hundred and forty thousand, remember, we just started last November.
Right.
So we only have two quarters in two months. We still have two quarters for the two thousand nineteen.
So, so Merk, so you're saying that in twenty twenty, operating Merck Miles is going to pay for itself?
Yes.
Okay, uh...
And not to say that we can all take a different approach. You know, there's only much we can do, but we can do better as the time progresses.
Yeah, could, because I, I still am not sure why we're keeping it open, even as we're compelling all of our residents to get residential service. And just a side note, my residents got very, they're very disturbed by the letters that they got, particularly the renters who don't own the properties. Apparently, uh, they, they were getting threatening letters about what would happen if they didn't sign up for service, and they're like, this isn't my property. That, you know, we should, we should talk about that. And it would also be helpful just as a, this is just a note to whoever sends out the letters. It would be helpful to inform council members that the letters are going out so that we can be ready for the daily use of calls that we'll receive from residents about us forcing them to do this thing.
If I may speak on that issue, I signed the letter to comply with the ordinance that was approved in October. We gave them a, a grace period after, uh, February. Then we asked them to provide proof of compliance with the ordinance. The ones that don't have services, they are the ones that provide us, given us a harder time. There are two things. Some of the providers didn't provide to us accurate information. That means that we're gonna correct that information in collaboration with our residents, us and the providers, and perhaps our revenues may increase. And within the comments that we received, the really good comments, like just, thanks so much for doing this to us. We want a free litter sale South Fulton.
Yes, Mr. Chief?
Yes. I spoke with all of them, not all of them, the ones that received the calls, and some of them said, I own a vacant lot. Thanks so much, sir, that's an apply for you. I have rental properties. I wanna check with my rentals to ensure that they have contract, but I'm not the person living right there. I rent three, but I will check my three providers to see if they have service. Please do.
So, so again, I'm not saying don't send the letters. I'm saying, one, let's make sure that we are sending the letters to owners and not renters. And two, just give the co- the, the council the courtesy to say, hey, I'm about to send these letters out. You're gonna get a bunch of angry calls, because you got the calls that you got, but we all got a whole different set of calls. Um, and it just so happens that half of us, half of us are up for election. So it would've been nice to have not sent the letter out, maybe, uh, or at least let us know. The, um, the, the, the last thing that I wanna talk about is the maintenance of, and I don't, and so I don't know if this is this new tranche of money under the, under our public works, or if this is a Jacobs issue. But there are, particularly in older subdivisions, like those on Old National, there are lots of right-of-way spaces that are not being maintained. So right behind, um, Love Tino and Elementary School, on the approach to my subdivision, the grass is like this high, no one ever cuts it because it's not anyone's yard, and it's not the school, it's just this space before the houses start. And, and then also in the, in between the sidewalks, everywhere that we put sidewalks, there are weeds that are growing up in the sidewalks. And that's not really, you know, even if the sidewalk is in front of my house, that's not really my, my, my yard anymore, 'cause you, you either took my land and you paid me for my land, and so I just wanna know, how do we address those issues? Who, which, which, is it Jacobs or is it you, and then like, how do we, how do we do that?
If you're, if you're looking at Jacobs, you're looking at me, right? So I manage them. Then I stay with them on a daily basis. I make sure that they do beyond what their contract obligations are. Then I get mad, they get mad with me. But I'm trying to make sure that they comply to every single thing of what is written in the contract. Within that contract, we're making sure that the scope of service is being properly revised to reflect what they're supposed to do, what their obligations are, and what should be the city's obligations. Within that, uh, we're taking other measures to ensure that weeds are taken care of in a different mode. Also, we're about at eighty-five percent completion of a GIS map. That's gonna reflect exactly what they're supposed to cut. So within that, we started with what we were doing at Fulton, a hundred forty-five miles, now we are two hundred and six. We increased, but we're gonna do a proper camp now. I'm working with GIS by next week, I should have a proper camp.
Okay, so let me just, let me, I'm sorry, 'cause I don't, I know we, we got some other, uh, presentations. Is the, the, the cracks in between the sidewalks, is that within Jacobs' scope of work?
It is within the right way.
Okay, and then the, the mowing of, of right-of-ways, is that within Jacobs' scope?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, um, I'm gonna yield to Mr. Baker, uh, I think you had a follow-up.
Yeah, um, I think Mr. Donald, you was very helpful yesterday with the letter situation, and I think he mentioned that there was gonna be some type of sheet with facts regarding that, that could be disseminated. Is that prepared yet?
Today.
Okay, great. It hasn't been?
It hasn't been disseminated yet. Um, Ms. Freeman is gonna do it before COB, so within the next hour and sixteen minutes.
Okay, thanks so much for that. Also, uh, the unpaved streets, near Old Jonesboro, Armlet, uh, I didn't see that up there. Is this something that you can, uh, add to, to represent that?
Like I mentioned before, the need for CS South Fulton is huge. I got about one point two million dollars of road resourcing that's in mere need. About eight hundred thousand dollars on roads that, nine, nine hundred thousand dollars on roads that need popping. An additional six hundred thousand dollars on needed roads that need paved. So one way of doing those things is, we're gonna look at the budget, what we have, what you're gonna prove, how much more money you can give us for the infrastructure. If you want us to take care of twenty twenty, we'll do in accordance with the budget. We're gonna put together the LAP funds, all the funds that we have, and see how much we can do on the primary need.
Well, I wanna, uh, on the record, say I need you to add that as a priority. Add that on, because it's like, you have a whole lot of residents over there, and it's about three different subdivisions that have to deal with that unpaid road, and their taxpayers very concerned, and now they're galvanizing together, uh, in reference to those unpaid streets.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you have that address, I mean, that you know that project?
I, I will.
I mean, we spoke about it offline, uh, but he could definitely share.
Sure. And so the last, last question. So I think it was the roundabouts where the LAP certification, whatever the project is, where we have to rebid that out. That's the only project that we have to rebid out?
Yes, sir.
I've never seen a construction project come in at a lower bid years after the original bid. So do we need to add more money to the budget in anticipation of a higher construction price?
I would say most likely, yes.
Do you have an idea of how much that would be?
It's kinda hard. If I put right there, you know, for everybody else, it's kinda hard to give them, you know, uh, it won't be on my end, like, we're gonna increase it and bidders, that's what they did.
Yeah, if he were to identify how much it may cost in this public setting without just transmitting it back to you, it would give an unfair advantage to bidders, and it might also let them know just how much they need to raise their bid, which I don't think you wanna do.
I hear that. I just wanna make sure that we have money in the budget for it. So we should figure, we should, maybe that's...
We should make sure, absolutely, through our budget deliberations, we need to make sure we identify how much to increase and provide you guys some insight on that.
Take a sec.
Before we put... Next person, Donald, on that FSQ, uh, I would suggest that we pass the draft along to everybody.
Yeah, that's why she had to send it out.
Yeah, to make sure that if there's a question that germines in Ms. Jackson's, uh, area, let's get that out. Uh, work it, okay? All right, Mr. Fatt. Oh, wait, hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, sit down, Mr. Fatt. Ms. Williams and Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I just also want my colleagues, this is my turn, I have the floor, right? Um, I just wanna remind my colleagues that it is three forty-eight, and we got two more presentations and an executive session. And I know one of our employees, uh, has to get out, get on the road and get out of town. So I just want us to be cognizant of that when we sit here and ask all these questions. Uh, so, I only have two. Where did Mr. Manzola, let's go.
Mr. Manzola, I'm sorry, I, I just missed you too early.
Um...
Sorry, ma'am, too fast.
The roundabout on Buttonarola and Stonewall Tale, we've been waiting for that just as long as Old National's been waiting on their sidewalks. And from my understanding, you said that, uh, roundabout is shovel-ready to go. Do you know when do we anticipate on getting that, uh, project started?
It's all about my contracts. It's all about my contracts.
So who are you waiting on now? You waiting on Fulton County or you waiting on the attorney?
It, it is on Fulton County.
So, Miss, I mean, Attorney Walker, can you give us an update on that?
We have, um, pushed Fulton County. They have finally given us final approval over every contract. It was several contracts. We executed on our end, and we have provided the signed documents to Fulton County, and we're just waiting for the city to act.
So, did they give you any indication on when you're gonna get them back, or have you followed up on it?
So we just sent, my understanding is that we have everyone back except, what, two? It may be, it's either one or two, but I was told that as soon as it went out, and I think it went out, what, a week ago?
Yes, it went out, no, about, as we receive execution from the vendors and, and so on, we're sending the next day or same day back to Fulton. But we've been on Fulton. Every, once a week, we file them stairs and...
Okay, well, I forwarded you an email, this is my last question. I forwarded you an email from Marty, because we keep going back and forth about who's responsible for what. And Marty said that if it's a bus stop with shelter and benches, they're responsible for picking up trash. If, if it's not shelter and benches, it's just a bus stop, we are responsible for picking up trash. So who's picking up the trash? Is it Jacobs?
We're gonna have to, uh, identify the loca- the locations of those bus shelters and ensure that within, when they do the right way maintenance at that location, see how might work out. I can't, without necessarily identifying the locations.
Mr. Donald, we've been a city for two years, and for us not to know who's supposed to be picking up trash at the bus stop, our shelter bus stop is unacceptable.
Don't move my issue. We, we've had transportation and that property or that service for less than a year. And so we have been a city for more than two years, and something that we need to work through, but it probably wouldn't be completely accurate to say that we've been...
Well, it was two years of a year. We still should know who's picking up trash in our communities.
No disagreement with you there. Thank you for your insight. We'll follow up. Post Hayes following this meeting with an update.
Oh, good.
Uh, Ms. Jackson?
Um, I just have two questions. And it, it's kinda going to what she was saying, but what is the responsibilities of Jacob? I'm hearing you asking for a lot of different people. So Jacob is just, oh, the oversight, 'cause I'm looking at this, uh, uh, organizational chart, it's saying public works director, but I don't see Jacobs anywhere listed under here. So, but I mean, I know they, they come under you, but I'm, I'm just saying that my question is, could we not have a general manager that, maybe I shouldn't be saying this like this, but I, I don't get it. We're spending a lot of money, but we're, we still have a lot of services that's going undone.
Understood, ma'am. Uh, we're actually, uh, meeting with Jacobs to go over the contract.
But I'm looking at six million dollars, we trying to go, we paying five million, right?
Five point seven million.
And then five hundred thousand or, or plus per month?
Ooh, Jesus.
Is that...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let me finish. Let me finish. And I, I expressed this, I expressed this to Jacobs. Uh, but what I'm saying is, we're paying that kinda money. And then we're at, they're asking, we're asking for more money, and when I ride my area, don't, it's the same problem that I'm having every time I'm riding. That makes no sense to me. I saw one instance where there was, you know, everything was, it was better. It's like they are manicuring that. But when I'm riding, we should not have to ride, and we got the same problems. Yes, we have an older community, but it doesn't have to look like that. And the money that we're paying, that is a problem. That's a real problem, and I, and I think that's coming to you, uh, city manager, because I believe that we could do this in-house. They have four, now, yeah, it's paying, because basically, what they're, what, what are they doing?
I mean, I'm paying five million.
Then we paying five million, and we, then we finna pay some more. We go a score on six point five.
So I can tell you, I...
Oh, that's what they want.
You're looking, well, and so those increases aren't necessarily allocated to Jacobs. So when you look at our transportation model, Jacobs does take on the bulk of it. But what we know is that the Fulton County model that didn't necessarily meet the needs of the residents cost about nine million dollars. Transportation is extremely expensive. And while we deliver these transportation services, I think one of the things that was a benefit from the ride-alongs that many of you done, I know that there are additional ones coming, is that you will clean on Friday, and everyone's extremely happy. And on Saturday, you are miserable because people have dumped and dropped trash.
I'm not necessarily talking about the trash.
I understand.
I'm talking about as far as the mowing. What did we talk about yesterday? The mowing and, I mean, areas that have not been touched, and you know they haven't been touched.
Understood, I, I, and I definitely, I'll explain it to you, and I'll tell you why Mr. Valenzuela has asked for these additional resources. So first, the trash, it looks like I don't have to explain that. Everybody understands that challenge. The second piece, even when it comes to the mowing, what we discovered, and what was the biggest challenge of transition, is that while Mr. Valenzuela is with us today, he was on the other side of the house during transition. And so the, I think it was, how many, uh, miles of road were not identified?
Uh, about sixty miles.
So that is not actually in the contract, because we didn't have the expertise on our side to coordinate these activities before we went into the agreement. So what we have been pushing, and I think he was polite in saying it, is we've kinda been holding Jacobs to the fire to deliver those additional sixty miles, even though it's not a part of the contract obligation. And so the request that Mr. Valenzuela has been making in the transportation portion is to not add additional funding to the contract, but to give him additional capacity to deliver transportation services. Because while we're very happy with Jacobs, and we don't have any plans on transitioning immediately, at some point, the city does want to deliver these services in-house.
Point of information, we are not very involved with Jacobs.
I didn't. Understood.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Either, either way, I think the point is, is that you don't develop capacity overnight. And if transportation is a nine and a half million dollar project with Fulton County, who we were not happy with, and we cut it to a six million dollar project, you still have to get to a certain point. And what we believe is, is it's going to be, for us to be fully happy, a nine and a half million dollar project, but we would deliver at a higher level and higher rate because we would have local control. And we don't have the funding to do that in FY twenty twenty. So his proposal is a hybrid of both.
Okay, but let me, um, ask you the last...
Before you go that far, if any of us are part of order, we direct it to the chair, and I buried that, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, I recall when we started, and I think I've asked this twice. You said that the equipment, the, the, you sold us on... You said that the equipment, that you sold us on this thing, that they have, yeah, they have their own equipment.
No, that they would acquire.
No, 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 you said they had their own equipment. So, we're leasing the equipment. So, I guess what I want to know is, who paying for that?
So, it is through our contract, so the benefit of the contract is you're able to acquire and lease the equipment quickly through Jacobs. And so, we've got list of items that we are leasing, I absolutely said that and it's on videotape that we can review.
Go back, I'm gonna go back to.
And I'll get you the dates, because I've looked as well, but there are leased vehicles and there are owned vehicles and equipment. And so, we have a list of those items and what happens is, when the contract ends, anything that was purchased and acquired through this Jacobs contract becomes the city. Any leases that are outstanding, you have the ability to take on the lease or purchase at that time. That is absolutely what it is. And the reason why we chose that model, if you remember, is that Fulton County had about a million and a half dollars worth of equipment that was at the end of their usable life. And what we were not going to do is purchase equipment that would not work for us. So, we included that in the actual contract with Jacobs. So, not only do you get the service, the staff, et cetera, et cetera, within that amount is also the purchase and lease. And so, it's no additional cost for those items. So, now, whenever it's complete, you own it. That is exactly what we committed to. So, for that same price, which again, is about, is quite a bit of a discount from the model that Fulton County had, you get the service as well as the equipment. So, that is exactly what we committed to because that is what was related to us. I'll stand by that.
Mr. Mayor. We'll do Ms. Williams and we'll end with Mr. Dr. Robb, we will end with Dr.
Well, I'm gonna say that I don't, I cannot sit here beat up on Jacobs, I don't have a problem with Jacobs. Um, I, I do remember when we were with the county and as Mr. Donald said, we were paying the county nine million dollars for Public Works. We had a six-man crew, we couldn't get our grass cut no more than once a month. And we couldn't get trash picked up on the weekend or if we had emergency situations. We could not, I would say that Jacobs has been very responsive to the sea click fixes. And they have been very responsive with filling in potholes. Uh, they have been very responsive with special event projects needed. So, I'm not gonna say Jacob is not, I don't see an improvement in service, I do see an improvement in service. It's just that we have a lot of demands and we have a lot of needs in the city of South Fulton. And I know if we had to stay in the service up and provide the service to our residents, uh, we would hear, we would get cussed out more than we got cussed out this week. Because I was getting cussed out, I know on the average, three or four times a week when we were with Fulton County paying more money for the services. And so, um, that's what I want to say about that. Now, I do need you to find out who's supposed to be picking up our trash at these bus stops. And.
Unsheltered bus stop.
Unsheltered bus stop, and I just sent you and Mr. Donald the email that came from Marty. And I do want to say that, and I did ride through my district and I'm gonna be honest with you, um, the only thing that I had was probably the overgrown trees. We do need to figure out how we're going to deal with overgrown trees in our right-ofways. And we need, we need to, we need to figure out how we're going to budget that, because that is a problem. And, um, it does impede people vision, it does impede traffic. And Jacobs is saying that they, the equipment needed to do that is something that's gonna cause, is gonna call for some investment. And/or some of that work is gonna have to be contracted out. So, we do need to get to that as quick as possible. And I would like to say this and I'm done. If we had to buy buildings, if we had to buy all this equipment needed for Public Works and hire employees fifteen dollars or more with benefits, uh, I, you know, we probably would have an eight-man crew versus a four-man crew. So, I have seen a difference.
Dr. Robb?
A quick question, I know we talked about in your presentation, a number of roundabouts going in. And I want to make sure we just don't have these concrete structures with no landscape. Has any funds been earmarked for landscaping? Because I think we have three or four coming up. Is there any money in our budget to make sure they're not just concrete blocks?
For these class projects, we control those. So, we're gonna have manicure at the level that we want to do. For the state, the state wants to expand concrete because the high cost for maintenance.
Cool question. I know in a previous project, I think it was at Flat shows at the interstate, intersection. Can you enter into conversations for those state roundabouts to make sure that we don't just have concrete blocks in our city? I mean, can we have some conversations or coordinate? Because I know like, y'all came back to us and said, okay, they're gonna do a basic level landscaper. But to take it to a higher level, y'all came up to ask us to support it like at Flat show. Can you do that with these state roundabouts that's coming to our city?
I think we, so we can definitely have the conversation, we've been having multiple conversations with G-DOT on a regular basis. So, the short answer is, can we have a conversation? Yes. Um, will it cost more to the city potentially? But it would, I would ask that you give us an opportunity to ask that question to them in our next meeting and bring it back.
I just don't want us to come back, I mean, I know they put them in like the marketplace, it helps flow, but it's really plain.
And I think additionally, you know. So, short answer, yes, we can.
Okay, and can we also have a list of the equipment that will become the property of the city of South Fulton as a result of this contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I think I have one more.
You know, one thing in relation to the Jacobs contract, I did hear Ms. Jackson mention that she didn't, you know, understand the full breadth of their contract. Would it be helpful to maybe have Jacobs come and present at the next council meeting, especially since it's still doing budget? So, we can commit to that there here. So, we'll make sure to do that at the next council meeting, maybe on the work session, so that everybody, that way, we can maybe clear some of those misconceptions up and get a better understanding of the service you want and expect.
Is there a consensus on that?
Yes, yes. And one last thing, in line with what we heard from another, I hope we are beginning to do some asset mapping for the city to figure out where these partners like the bus shelter. Because I know which ones, when I drive by them, are not maintained. But if we had some kind of map that I knew the one right there, you know, across from Kroger, if it had trash and it has a number, because I know they have numbers on it, if we knew that, we could be calling them in when we know that they're out of whack. And so, I think it would be very helpful, we have some kind of map that located where these bus shelters are and the numbers associated. So, when we're calling in a martyr to say, or their contractor who maintains them, we can, we can stay on top of that as well.
That's the reason why we're asking more support for G.I.S.
Okay.
And I mean, our support will allow us to do many things of what it needs, but in fact, our contractors say those.
Okay, Mr. Fatt?
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am excited to present the fiscal year twenty twenty budget for Destination South Fulton Economic Development. All right, so our key highlights and deliverables. We want to make sure that we are investing heavily in small business. And so, we've asked for an allocation to establish Small Business Resource Center, business development, networking events, and business seminar programs to help assist with startups and businesses that are trying to expand, that are currently located in the city of South Fulton. The other large ticket item, professional services, that has to do with specifically with Charles Abbott contract or permitting, or inspections rather, and also technical assistance for our planning. So, as the strategic plan gets completed and we move to the next phase of implementation and with our tax allocation district, if it passes in November, we'll have to develop plans specific to those functions. And so, we will need to bring in professional services to help us with those items. And then, of course, once we figure out the direction that we're gonna go in relating to master planning, we'll help push that vision out to the community. So, we're doing a very direct marketing promotion around that. All right, next slide. Our goals for this year are to, A, we want to deliver the Economic Development Strategic Plan. We've already seen the update on that plan this week. Our goal is to have that delivered to the council in November. We will be starting focus groups in September for community input. The other thing we want to do is really focus our efforts on supporting small businesses. So, we want to develop Small Business Resource Center to encourage entrepreneurship and business expansion in our city. We want to also bring onboard two Main Street programs. That one will be dedicated for revitalization efforts in International and also the Red Oak Storage District. In addition, utilizing hotel motel tax, we've developed a tourism plan for the city of South Fulton. And also, continue our efforts for outreach and education as it relates to business opportunities in the city. And also, the completion of Oscar feasibility study. We have, our actually closed, forbid solicitation for that. And we are hoping that we will bring in a top three to interview and talk about selecting the firm to do the feasibility study. And one thing that we want to be able to do in conjunction with our strategic plan is the acquisition of land for the purposes of investment and also attracting developers to do the projects. And of course, the if tax allocation district is passed in November, we want to be able to move forward with the plan that we were required to do around establishing tax.
Next slide.
So, we're real quickly just going through our budget. I want to say for the record, it's, you can't, it's hard to compare this year's budget to last year's budget as it relates to economic development. For a few things, comments, so when business license and permitting were transferred to Destination South Fulton, the fees for salary were transferred, but all the operational part was not. So, we actually managed the department, what was this allocated for economic development. Secondly, technically, the Main Street budgets could be separate from economic development. You basically have three budgets in one, two Main Street programs, economic development, and also permitting and division. So, you really have several sub-departments all in one budget. So, that's why the numbers are gonna be a lot different than what you had in twenty nineteen. So, real quickly, again, just professional services that relates to Charles Abbott contract and some of the engineering, master planning that we'll be doing this year, special events. That should be more labeled business resources. Those would be our seminars, workshops, our Small Business Resource Center, advertising we talked about. Permitting and binding, dues and fees, education and training, you see an increase in those because those are related to the two Main Street programs. They'll have a lot of things that we didn't do last year that we'll have to do in twenty twenty. So, that's why you see those increases in those line items. Same thing with office supplies, mobile phone postage, and rental equipment. So, those are all related to bringing the Main Street programs online. Next slide. And the next slide is our organizational chart, our organization will be growing in the economic development side, which is something that we didn't do a lot this year because we're really trying to put the organization together. But now that we have our bearings, our plans, goals, we need to bring on staff to support the economic development mission for the city. And so, we're asking for two Main Street managers and a tourism manager, in addition to administrative support for the department. We will be transferring business license to finance, so we actually don't have an increase in positions. This department will be the same as it is in fiscal year nineteen. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
Um, you just asked us one, so, business license is going to finance, well, permits, and I think I said that the other day, well, not said it, but I expressed my concern, permits being under economic development. And basically, I'm just looking at the fact you're working with developers and then also you're that person to give permits as well. So, I just have a concern with that.
All right, is that okay, Ms. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Gilian?
Um, I want to go over the non-personal part of the budget.
Okay.
Currently, in the professional line, seven hundred twenty-five thousand. And the request is to go up to eight fifty. So, as far as I know, the only professional services that we've obtained thus far is for the Economic Development Strategic Plan, right?
So, so the Charles Abbott contract is in that number and that's, that's probably ninety percent of that number is Charles Abbott. So, Charles Abbott, they're the entity that does the inspection over there, so.
But I thought that, because when we first went into a contract with them, it was only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, over the years, did it increase?
So, this year, we first initially allocated about six hundred thousand. We've actually did a budget amendment to increase that number. So, if the Charles Abbott contract works, it's basically a revenue split. So, as we increase building permits and increase inspection because they're doing more work, that number is gonna increase. And so, revenues also increased related to that as well. So, it's not really, it shows up as an expense in my, in my budget, but it's not really expense. It's a revenue split between Charles Abbott and the city.
So, all, so, so why is it increasing from seven twenty-five to eight fifty?
So, the other parts of that, so if the tax allocation district passes in November, we're required by law to do a development plan, so we're gonna bring in somebody to help us do that development plan. Also, when we look at master planning, some of the other areas, so if we get these districts that will be proposed from the Economic Development Plan, we will need to hire architects to help us do master planning on those areas. And those, those are the documents that we take and present to developers to entice them to invest. So, we need to have funds available to allow us to do that.
Okay, so, so if you're gonna have ten employees instead of eleven, because you went down one, the net is one, I'm assuming, because the business license people are already excluded from this. And most of the people that are left are the permit specialist and then the Main Street and tourism, et cetera, et cetera, right? So, why do you need four more thousand for telephones? Well, one more thousand, wait a minute, I'm sorry, just let me say this and, because I prefer to do it in a group, so then I can finish with you. So, four more thousand for phones. At least four thousand more for travel, even though you don't have as many people. More for education and training. Office supplies, we really went up a lot, over ten thousand dollars. Hospitality and special events.
Yeah, so absolutely, so when I started out, I mentioned that bringing those Main Street programs online are gonna require some upfront costs. So, for example, you're required as part of the Main Street program to have a Main Street office in the district. So, there will actually be a whole office in the Red Oak District, there'll be an office on Old National. And so, you'll have to have all of the office supplies, the equipment, everything to bring those offices online that the Main Street program is gonna need to operate. So, that's the increase in those expenses related to bringing those programs online. But also, the fact that last year, we did not bring the operational part of permitting business license over to Destination South Fulton. That actually stayed in community development. So, we weren't, the funds weren't necessarily allocated properly when that department moved over. The personnel part did, but the operational, so you can imagine that permitting uses an enormous amount of paper. The personnel part did, but the operational, so you can imagine that permitting uses an enormous amount of paper. And so we're constantly having to buy supplies, so.
So I'm a little bit confused because I thought that Charles Abbott was still under planning because of all the engineering stuff that has to go on under the planning department. So I'm sort of not seeing the logic of it being under economic development in addition to the permitting part. I don't understand that. Because I really think that, it's sort of like, to me, it's one of those things like GIS. I don't think GIS needs to be under the city manager. I think GIS needs to either be a part of IT or planning where it originally was. And in many cities, it is, and in this case, the same with permitting. And so that's a concern that I have. I just wanted to express that concern and the fact that the bottom line of the budget is going from one point six million to two million. And I'm thinking about all the other needs that we have and the fact that we're still going to have to do some trimming and cutting somewhere.
Sure. Well, to your point, obviously, it's the council's discretion. If that's the will of the council to realign the department, then certainly we will make adjustments accordingly to accommodate that. I will say about economic development, more so than any of the other departments, economic development is a return on investment. So you should be seeing that by investing in this department, you should be increasing revenues collected by the city so that you're able to fund the other departments in the city. So I, you know, generally, we generate more revenue than we consume for the city.
I understand.
Okay, Mr. Kalid.
Great segue about generating revenue and Charles Abbott. But just out of curiosity, when did we move Charles Abbott and like, how was that move made?
Last budget.
So when we approved the budget, in that budget was an org chart. Is that when we also moved GIS?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, I'm not going to beat that horse, we just got to stop moving these departments around. The, but about Charles Abbott, I've heard recommendations from our Charles Abbott people that we should look at increasing our building fees. And that they're lower than everywhere else in the area. And I can't help but wonder if we always get like cheaply constructed things because it's just so cheap to do construction here. So are there any plans to assess that building fees?
Yes, so Mrs. Reed and I are actually having conversations about bringing the fee schedule back with some recommendations on some changes. So we do recognize that and we are working to fix that.
Okay, my next question is about tourism. I know that people are filming things in South Fulton. A couple of months ago, they, there was a film, you know, of The Walking Dead on Flat Hills at the Bisavant Church. Are we getting any money from that? And like, how, how do we, how can we as a city get? Because I think other cities, like Atlanta, has a film program where they give money for permitting it. Am I wrong in that?
No, there is, so there is a permitting process, just same type, similar type process is when someone does an event in the city. So there is a process permitting where they come in and so we do have, so we do collect funds related to that.
Oh, so we are getting some funding fees?
Yeah, we are. We need to tweak it a little bit and we'll be bringing some recommendations to the council to look at, but there is currently a permitting process.
Who is the person that's responsible for that?
So that's done through permitting, so they come in just as.
Through Charles Abbott.
No, no, that's, so that's Mr. Smith, who's in this department.
Okay.
Mr. Kalid, this should probably be noted, I know they're talking about bringing that fee schedule back specific to these areas, but what they're actually working on is bringing a citywide fee schedule back to you guys for a year.
The, I don't know if it takes a whole person, but I think that that is a place that we could probably get more revenue if we're marketing ourselves as a place to come and film. We've got some affordable hotels and things like that. So we've even got some abandoned houses that you could blow up if you want to blow up and demolish it for us, if you can work that into somebody's script. But.
And to your point, that's, that's one of the reasons why I want to bring the tourism manager in that program development around tourism to help address a lot of that we're talking about.
So yeah, I mean, that's a personal thing I'm for. So last question is about special events. Your budget is like twice the size of Park's special events budget. And we've talked about having a special events office or Bureau of Cultural Affairs. Are you all working together? What is the, and I guess this is maybe a question for the city manager, but like, what is the coordination around that? Because it would seem to me that it would be more logical to have one special events person, one special events department, and one special events budget.
Sure. Well, to that point, these aren't the same type of special events that Parks does. And the line item probably should be labeled business development. Because that's really the line item related to bringing the small business resource centers online. It's not necessarily events, it's that function of the small business resource center. It's the bulk of that, so.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Bruce?
I just would like to ask that before we start moving departments again, because I'm looking at an organization chart that we adopted in 2018 that we're not following. We do research and we see what precedence is set for other cities. We don't have to make mistakes, other cities have made mistakes for us. And so before we start doing things based on what we think, we know, we need to make sure we have some data and we have some research behind it. And then, and then, and then I also don't want to be adding stuff to departments when they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing now. And so, and I'm saying, I won't, I'm not in favor of adding anything else to planning because we can't even get code enforcement right. Second, Main Street. Where are we with the Main Streets? Because I thought we were supposed to start Main Street for 2019 for O'National and 2020 for Roosevelt Highway. And then I know both of those, every Main Street is supposed to have a director.
So we are, we have currently a proposal for the council to address the permanent location for the Main Street office. So we kind of have to have some action on that before we can move forward.
I'm sorry, I'm not laughing at you.
No, no.
I'm probably, you're being rude. Okay, but are they in the budget? Are we still planning on doing them?
Yes, they are budgeted. That's what you're seeing the increase for is to bring those programs online.
And since we want to talk about alignment, we need to be aligning the finance back on the city manager.
All right, Mr. Baker.
I just wanted to ask a quick question about the land acquisition. Do you have any ideas of where you may be looking to acquire land?
So it will all be driven by the strategic plan. So those recommendations obviously aren't prepared yet because we're still in the process of doing focus groups and everything. But it will be related to the plan and fulfilling and making the plan basically come to fruition. So there's nothing planned yet, it'll be in relations to the strategic plan.
That is, there's nothing planned yet?
Nothing planned.
Okay, Mr. Baker. One thing, if we're going to do this entertainment deal, we need to consider the fact that, I don't know if we can, we cannot, with people's expectation of what's happening in their community when they're filming a movie. Bull Rock Road was a classic example where they filmed over there. There was expectation of you're inconveniencing me, then you should pay me for my inconvenience. So just keep that in mind because you can't go in and interrupt the community.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I just wanted to add to that, that one of the complaints that I've heard is that when they're doing that filming, they're not hiring anyone over. So I would love, because we have several schools in the area that train people in media and digital arts, I would love for some of our young people to at least be able to be hired as assistants or gaffers or something.
Certainly, we can recommend that. I will say that film is highly unionized and so most times they're only going to hire union workers. And so that's been an issue everywhere in the state, but certainly we can recommend that.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Broome?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, on your schedule, this is where you took them.
And I think we probably need one for about five, would you all agree?
Just five, six minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I ask, can I ask a question? May I ask a question? Can we take a restroom break and let Chief Broome do the last presentation? So we can let these employees. Who was the last?
Is this the last?
That's it, yeah. Can we take a five-minute break?
Oh, he gonna be here all night.
Let's just take a five, six-minute break, okay?
So I'm trying to let you go.
But what time, the time, exactly, what time?
Five minutes. So delaying this presentation with thirty-five. Because you already know they're not going to let this dog alive here without fifty questions.
Us, just us, not you, just us, okay.
In my understanding, in my understanding that you want to take a break now for five minutes?
Five minutes.
Let's do it. Five Episcopalian Republican minutes.
Is this anybody's laptop?
That's mine, that's mine, that's mine. He needs to go back over there.
Okay, we saw somebody who just left.
No, he stays over there so I can have Wi-Fi.
Saw somebody who left it. Yeah. All right, Mr. Broome. Uh, thanks for giving us some, excuse me. We want to move this as fast as we can because several of us have other obligations. Andy Kixey and First Lady Stevens tonight, two of our students. We might want to make a showing there. All right, Mr. Broome, go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm excited to be here tonight to present my first budget. I've been dressed up for it, so. So we look at our department, our theme this year for our budget is delivering efficient government through faulty insurance. And some of our key highlights and deliverables that we're going to focus on this year, one, is trying to implement changes that improve current ISO rating. Now that's going to take time to improve that rating, but we're trying to put things in place now so that we can pass forward when we're in the process. Another key rule we're looking at is implementing health programs. There'll be money that I'll pop down in our budget to convince them to help the health program. Apparently, we do not have any type of health program in place for our fire department and firefighters. We're trying to put something in place where we have a safety fit test and those types of things in place to make sure that our firefighters officially fit through their job because that's important. One, that they can do the job, and two, to save their lives, their coworkers' lives, and of course, citizens. So those are some things we're going to be implementing this year. And we're also going to implement a council reduction. Our council reduction plan is just being proactive to make sure that we're doing things in our beginning to protect our firefighters from being exposed to cancer. Some of the things that we'll talk about is getting more time here, working on getting a exhaust system for fire trucks and different things that expose firefighters to cancer. We're trying to do our part on the end, allowing them to eliminate those hazards. Another thing we're talking about is creating a citizen fire academy. It's a program we're trying to enhance community engagement. The city is going to have a citizen university and we're just going to follow up on that on road. So whereas the city university program focuses on all department, we'll actually have a program that will focus on the fire department. We'll bring citizens into the fire department and allow them to see exactly who we are, what we are, what service we provide, and how we provide our services. In that training, we also did our birthday PR training, there'll be fire inspection training. There are different things that we'll end up wearing too, so they can actually keep themselves safe as well and catch up with their base mark of their dangers. Another thing that we're looking for is enhancing the department's branding and marketing effort by tapping social media sites. We want people to know who we are, that we exist. And we've already started, only a little, we started our social media page. We had a Facebook page that started two weeks ago and we're already over six hundred followers. So our goal is in our first month, we hope we'll have a thousand followers. So if you're on Facebook, please share it with all your friends, everyone like our page. We're posting things on there, we're posting fire safety tips. We started a monthly fire safety newsletter that we're putting out there as well on social media, if you can share that information. We're doing birthdays to all our employees. We recognize them by saying we had a birthday, just trying to get the community involved, engaged with the fire service as well. So that's some things that we're doing to, so we can have people talking about City South Fulton Fire Department. Another thing that we're looking at, another key variable is enhancing the community reduction program. We have a smoke detector program, we want to continue to work with our council and our community so we can install smoke detectors. Another program, something new that we want to start, is a physical challenge program. And what that program aims to do, we're going to really need your help for that, is that we want to identify senior citizens or members in our community that may need assistance in terms of needs. So if we have a fire, if we have a fire, then we'll go to a house and we'll search every room. But if we know that there's someone at that house that needs our assistance, then we will actually go straight to that person's bed and we'll let them be out and then have someone else go into the house so we can actually get to the citizen's faster. So by us going out to the community, meeting these citizens, getting their information, drawing up where they are, sharing that information with the police department as well, and if we have an incident there, we'll be able to know how to get there, once we get there, which room we need to go to to help that citizen out faster. So that's a new program we're trying to do. We definitely going to need our council's support to identify citizens in the community that will qualify for these programs. There are goals that we're placing that I want us to monitor to, as towards our performances. I always believe the advocate that it's not as important to accomplish a goal as to have goals in place to accomplish. And so this is giving us goals to have in place that we need to accomplish our performances. If we are looking at being a world-class partner, we have to start measuring ourselves on world-class standards. And even just basically, we have to make standards that most fire departments already have in place. So we're working with Mr. Botley at GIS and he's, we already, the city already owns a headless system and has a lot of different apps that will actually help us capture this information. So hopefully by October, we'll have some things in place, but if not by January, we'll reach out, capture this information and this is available to the community as well as to this one, to some of these goals. So a lot of deals for response time, we're trying to receive this amount of time. Make sure we have a lot of firefighters who've seen, some of us do training hours as well. One of the things I talked about earlier is trying to implement ways to improve our ISO rating. We need to do well with our training. So we're trying to make sure that we're making this part of our goal, our performance measure. So we're putting things in place now, so we're actually starting to measure those now as far as training hours, company hours, training hours, and things like that. Another thing I put in there is increasing our number of chief officers. Right now, we currently have over fifty supervisor slash chief officer and only five of them are certified chief officers. And we have to improve that. So we're putting things in place now so we can be one chief officer, a fire officer certified, to be able to charge. EMTA is something else we want to try to prove about ten percent as well, getting more of our EMTs trained at EMT level. Right now, we noticed how much we can do with rate and response time, and then we're working on that. But on our end, we need to make sure that all of our employees are trained up to EMTA level. So when we're there, we provide some high-level services to our citizens. So that's something that we know that we're going to improve on and we set that as a goal to get more of our firefighters trained as an EMTA level. Pre-plans is something else that we're doing, and Hydrants, those two other goals, that is standard goals and also things I also look at. So we're making sure that we're conducting annual Hydrants inspections when we out there every year, opening up the Hydrants and stacking, making sure the Hydrants are properly.
Next slide.
So this starts our list of some of our capital expenses. I got it broken down into different areas. These are some of the stations. This does not include the list of stations seventeen and fifteen because they're on the current ERA. But these station facilities are not, so we. But these station facilities are not, so we really, uh, need to find a way to get this into the URA or how we wanna prove it. Because these are fundings that we need to approve at these stations. And this is not gonna fix all, all of the stations, this is things that we identified that needs to be addressed immediately. Um, there's still a lot of things in these non-stations, I mean, like Station Two, uh, the roof needs to be replaced, they're nice, and they're sleeping and water's dripping on them. So those are things that really needs to be replaced. And we, we put these out here so we hopefully can get these approved as well as stations we pass, or stations fifteen and seventeen as well. So those are also immediate needs for stations. Some more immediate needs that we need our capital place to be approved. Uh, hydraulic, uh, extracation equipment needs to be replaced, our day was right over from the county, uh, and we need to replace that hydraulic equipment. That, uh, was some of the pressures, it's also like, we have a lot of vehicles, uh, accidents. I was involving one, uh, was two days ago on FIB, it was minor injuries, somebody ran into me. But, uh, we always run the accidents right here on FIB or interstate. So we really need to make sure we have the tools and weapons where if someone was peeing into the car, we can properly extract them out. Uh, air packs and accessories, if you had to ask me what was our number one need that we have to get immediately, it's the air pack and accessories. Uh, our air pack accessories are fifteen years old and they're scheduled to expire at the end of this year. And what that means is that at the end of the year, they're no longer, uh, meeting manufacturer requirements, they're no longer meeting NPA requirements, they're no longer meeting safety departments. Uh, it's kinda like the cell phone, what happens is that you're gonna get your update on your cell phone, you have to update the software. Well, these air packs, they're over fifteen years old, so they're no longer eligible for updates. So that means that they'll still work in January, but they're not providing any safety features, protection, anything that is required. So we definitely need to get new air packs and get approval for that. And that includes the air packs and also includes the cylinders. The cylinders, uh, last fifteen years, after that you couldn't long use them anymore. So most of our cylinders are starting to end this year or early next year. So it'll be approved with funding to go ahead and replace the air pack and the cylinders because not, they all have outdated equipment. Turnout gear, uh, firefighter gear is another thing. We originally asked for, uh, over five hundred thousand to replace gear, but we decided to split it up and have this year in twenty and half, twenty-one. But the reason we need that and that not so high is that we gotta replace some of the gear that our firefighters have, cause they were damaged or torn. For after ten years, the manufacturer no longer warranties it until you can no longer use it. So we need to replace it for those reasons. But also, we talked about council reduction, most of our firefighters only have one set of turnout gear. So they have a fire right now, they can't change their gear, they can't wash and clean it till the next day. And we want them to be able to, they have a fire, take all that gear off, go to a station, wash it, but while they're washing it, they already have another set of gear that they can wear. Uh, even when it gets to the winter time, you know, that gear gets a little colder, so even when they're in a fire and their gear is soaking wet, a lot of times firefighters are burnt from steam, not through actual weather contact. So when their gear is soaking wet, they have to be able to take it off and put something dry on, and right now they can't do that before. So we gotta have something in place so our firefighters have at least two sets of gear. So that's why we're working on that, trying to do that. So it helps keep our firefighters safe, but it also helps us implement a council reduction because they can take off all that dirty gear and be able to wash it and have something clean to put on, and not wait for two more days. That fourth radio, uh, of course, our tribulations is something that is trying to replace the tribulations. And I throw them into cameras, they're outdated, they're old, so we just need to start replacing them because they're all lifesaving equipment, of course. You know, tribulation are somewhere, it's a cardiac arrest, we need to shock them, bring them back to life. We throw them into cameras to help us with searching, so when we size a house and we actually search for someone, the camera will pick up the heat and let us know someone's in that room and we can do a quick search. But right now, our camera's not working properly, we can't provide those services efficiently. So another thing on there that we really support is a qualitative fit test machine. Right now, we do not have a fit test machine, so when we need to fit test our firefighters to wear a mask, we're having to call someone else in. And we, we won't either buy that machine or have them test our students for us. So we, they should be, every year, our firefighters should be tested annually with their mask, make sure it works. If we see a significant change where someone gained weight or lost weight, they're supposed to have a fit test. If they have any type of facial, uh, structural injury, they're supposed to have a fit test. So we're not even fit testing at all, so we need to have something in place. So we're fit testing annually and also when they meet any of these criteria, so they have to be fit tested in addition to being done annually. Uh, we look at public capital items, it says three engines and one line of trucks, two of those engines and line of truck is part of lease payment. Those trucks should be here hopefully sometime in November for a new truck. And we're also requesting permission now to get approval for a new truck. And then if council approves a new truck, we'll put it out for then and we'll start building it in January, February, next year. So when it's actually delivered, it's not delivered into the twenty twenty-one budget, so we pay for it then. What we need to get approval, go ahead and start building. And so that's what we asked for, for a new truck. Uh, we asked for a truck to prove its fire safety house, and if that cap is approved, we get a fire safety house, we need to have approval for that as well. Another important thing that we need up there in addition to the new truck is air light truck. The air light truck is the fire, is the truck that actually goes to all trucks fired, and they have a cascade system that fills all the bottles up on the scene. Currently, our trucks are being serviced only here. So we have been at the mercy of other fire departments that if we have a big fire, for them to bring their truck out there and fill our bottles up for us. We need to have our own truck to be able to fill our bottles up for us. So we, uh, thank you for, at the last meeting, you actually approved funds for us to purchase a cascade system that goes station level, and that's the station area. So we'll use that one to go there for the bottles, but if we have a big fire, we still gotta fill the bottles up on the scene as well. So we need both of them. And finally, on the technology, uh, tough looks, we're putting computers on the trucks. We're behind on that, we really need to have computers on the trucks. Uh, this is not just about giving firefighters directions on how to get to the fire, I mean, there's much more than that. It allows us to actually communicate with our cap system. So we don't have to even check them out with, they improve response times because we're able to check them out. But also, we're able to put the applications on there so we can do closer unit dispatch. Which means that if Engine Two is covered your area, but Engine Two is on another call, but Engine Five is close to that area, it'll send Engine Five to closer unit versus sending somebody else. So getting these computers on the truck actually provides a whole number of services that we can provide to our, our, our community as well. So really, we need to get these computers on the truck as well. And I just had a meeting with the county and also there's opportunities to put tree plans in there as well. So we can get, move, uh, layout of buildings, put those buildings, the layouts into a system, and so when we're going on that call, we can actually put our information up and have all the information available. That physical challenge program I talked about, we can have that information available, it'll come up in our systems when we're responding. They can look at the house, they can pull up notes and they can see that this is a physical challenge location, and we can communicate that information. These are some of the things that we're doing that we really need in our capital project, uh, to get funding for, and we can really enhance the service of our department. Uh, operations, uh, I won't go through each line item. Uh, purchase of contractor services, that goes where I was talking about, of trying to, of having funding to start doing any physicals for our firefighters, which right now we currently just not doing. So that's what that fifty thousand dollars is for. Another line item that, education and training, there's not enough in there, but it's what we can work with, so the medium, we may ask for more. I talked about earlier how we need to improve our, um, EMTAs and how we can have an department. In the past, getting your EMTA or EMT was an individual goal to get promoted. And we need to make it an organization goal to provide a better service. And if we're gonna make it an organization goal to provide better service, that means we need to be paying for that and sending our employees that training to get that training. And that's the way we're gonna be able to get up to where we can have a hundred percent compliance of everyone, at least an EMTA, to be able to do a better service. So that's something that, that sixty-five thousand dollars, we got in there to kind of help, we're doing that as well. And I actually had a meeting with airport manager, uh, yesterday, and I had a meeting with, uh, today with the EMS coordinator for the county. And when they, they have plans to open up the airport station, and we're supposed to be a part of those plans. And so we can also need to provide arc trains for our employees as well as airport firefighter rescue train. And making sure that our employees are trained to that level, so when they open up that station again, that they're in a situation that we are the ones that need to provide that service. So that's why I said that's probably not enough, but if you're starting, in the near year, we'll probably come back to where we're at and maybe ask for some more to make sure that we're getting this trained to deliver the service. And other thing on this slide, I mean, you know, those are just date operations for water, sewer, and different buildings we get from the stations itself. Um, the gas and fuel, that is, uh, we actually responsible for all the fueling for all the city vehicles as well, so we manage that. So that's how that, um, price is so high. Uh, uniforms, we have not had any uniforms, it's transitioning over, and a lot of uniforms are really starting to show the wear and tear. And I stress important, but maintain that professional image. You know, we just don't wanna, uh, perform our job tomorrow, so make sure that we're looking to perform our job. Cause we're representing our community, our mayor, our council, and it's representing me as well. And I don't go out with dirty uniforms on and torn shirts and I don't expect them to do it as well. So I can't fuss at them now because they're saying we don't have uniforms, so we're putting more money in to make sure we get new uniforms. So when they're out these events, they're representing our community as well. We, we have requested, uh, eleven new physicians. And in my short time here, I've identified some areas of weaknesses that needs to be improved. Um, and the first thing I noticed is that our community reduction unit is short staffed. And so we're requesting for two, um, who tends to build community reduction, and that'll give us a total of three. And one thing that we're doing is we do company inspections. And I have a background in doing company inspections, and I know we're doing company inspections that although we do an inspection, we're doing inspections based on the, uh, the quantity. And not the quality of inspections. And we need to be doing quality inspections because when a company officer's in a truck, they take the whole fire truck out there. First, he's pulling the fire truck out, out from his territory, then they have to, they deal with your inspections, which delays time for them to get back to the fire truck, respond to the call. Uh, and also, between that, during inspection, they're running back and forth two calls. So it takes away from actually doing a quality inspection, so we wanna make sure that we're doing quality inspections. And we wanna make sure that every business within our community is having an annual inspection. And to do that, we're gonna have to add more inspectors to our inspection division. Uh, training as well, and logistics, that one in training is gonna help. I said we did not do well with ISO when it came to training, so we're gonna actually have more training involved. And we need the staff to be able to provide all this training, that they're gonna need to provide. And logistics, we talked about a health and work initiative, that person's really gonna help oversee that health and work initiative and the council reductions. And make sure that we're in compliance with local, uh, regulations, federal regulations, and national standards. And we also have several positions that is going to, the operation being that's gonna help the staffing, making sure that we are improving the staffing level. And having more firefighters in the truck to respond to these high hazard areas as well. And that's just how, you know, if you wanna just summarize, is where the new positions that we're requesting will be. As I mentioned, one will be in logistics, one will be in training, and we'll break the training down to, instead of having everyone focused on fire, we'll have one captain that will focus, captain ten, that focuses all fire training. Because they have to, each firefighter has to have sixteen hours a month of firefighter training. So we'll be focusing on that, but we also will have a captain that is focused strictly on EMS training. So we'll be in continuous training, making sure we're doing those hours as well, when it's time to be certified. At that, that is the end of my presentation.
Ms. Brown?
Couple of questions, um, I had the opportunity to look at our URA for twenty twenty relative to the list in your presentation. And I know that there were some omissions, so I wanted to bring this to someone's attention. Under Fire Station Seven, it says a hundred thousand, it's actually seventy-two thousand. And we don't have anything earmarked in the URA for Fire Station Thirteen, when your request in your presentation you did was a hundred thousand. Also, under car, cargo van, uh, is supposed to be Ford F- two-fifties. And the Ford two-fifties is supposed to be air light truck. For the three-seventy-five versus the forty-eight thousand. And there was no money in the URA for technology for Fire Station One or the Panasonic tub books. So I just wanna make sure, so the ones that when you netted out, if you put seventy-five thousand nine fifty on the line item for, uh, Fire Station Thirteen, at least you have some money. If you, if you align them up, that makes sense. So, somebody needs to check that math.
Here you are.
I only have one comment, um, beside, um, just give me one minute. Natural gas, it says review submitted. That's the notation, uh, beside the amount is allocated for it. And the budget is seventy-eight thousand allocated for it. And I wanted to know what kind of review was submitted.
She said that's hard to notice.
Oh, review submitted for what?
You know, I would do what he submit, give the notification.
I see now, I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kalid? All right, um. My first question is about, uh, about the, uh, EMT certification, I think that's awesome, I have a lot of friends in Atlanta Fire. Uh, I am wondering, and I, and maybe this is a question for our attorney. Is there any way that we can just make sure that people don't get the certification and leave, that we can obligate them for like a year or two years, whatever you think would cover the cost of paying for that?
I mean, that'd be attorney's question, but I'm all in favor of that, and not just for that, but even new hires as well, making sure that if we're getting all this training, that they have to stay at least two or three weeks or, or be, uh, have to pay something back.
I, I know, um, I think it's, I think it's when that police does this, uh, cause they have really good training for their police department. I think they do like a four-year thing, and then every year it goes down by a certain amount. So you can leave, but you just have to pay back.
I'm all in favor of that.
So, we are discussing today, this afternoon, with the HR director. This is the same thing as we're talking about education, implementing reimbursement for, for employees. So in this term, you can bring a policy to say if we hire our staff, they come here, we train them. They have to stay one year, they have to stay two years before they leave, if they leave without, before that time, they have to reimburse. That apply is still the same, if you are going to adopt to provide education to all employees, it has to be all employees. Then you have also to have policy to say if we give you for one year, you have to work for us for two years. If you leave earlier than that, before you leave, you have to refresh us. So for them, it can just be a policy, it will be implemented.
So, so I, I'm gonna work on that and I invite you to my colleagues who are interested in, uh, co-sponsoring that with me. But, um, the, the, the new.
Can I comment on that? I do have a city that I represent where they have a policy similar to that in place, so legally you can do it. But, they spend way more money enforcing it than they recover.
So maybe that can be part of our fiscal impact statement that we'll do when we, when we go through that. And that's, that's, that's good to know. Um, new stations, can you go back to that slide? Is that possible, we, we were talking about the stations two, five, twelve, or whatever it is? I just, I wanted to find out where all of those stations were, cause I'm not as familiar with all the station numbers. And while, while, while they're asking that, um, while, while they're pulling that up, my question is, you, you said that's that four hundred something thousand, yeah, the four hundred sixty-nine thousand? That is not in the URAs and we need to find money for that? That's correct. The million dollars for tools and equipment, is that not in the URA and we need to find money for that million as well?
Only thing that we have in there is Station Fifteen and Seventeen, so none of our capital stuff right now is a part of that. And that's what we're asking for all of that to be considered, so we can find funding for.
So we need to find funding for one point five million.
Isn't that already included in the general fire, Mr. Malazin? Those items that they have in the capital budget?
But I thought that was the first one, now that you have a lot of inclusion for fire. On page, uh, the one that we had, everything that has got.
Yeah, that's what I was telling you.
Right, you have.
You were saying what now?
Most of these are in here. Most of these are in here, but there are some omissions and some corrections, and that's what I was reading on. Right, I looked at his presentation and compared it to this list, and it's a few things that they're not aligned, but it's not many. So.
And it was the list, so I think that's what she was saying earlier, Mr. Malazie. And she was reading off that list, because she was saying that list has some, a few missing items. And so she's saying make sure you look at those once you go through the budget and start cleaning it up before we read it at the next meeting.
Right.
Did you sit down or anything?
I can read my page.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, Dr. Rob, is that, are you talking about this list?
Yes, so I went through, when he was going through his presentation, I looked at this page that they tabbed us for the U R A to make sure they were all included.
So some of this four hundred and sixty-nine thousand is not included?
All of it is included for one item.
All, so all is included but one item from this list?
Right.
What about the list with the one point one million?
I did, I went through the whole thing.
And so what, and so do we have a total for, because we have to find that money. So that's all I'm saying is we just need to know what, how much.
I, I already did. That's what I'm saying. The only difference is because how we put it in here.
So Station Thirteen, as, uh, the.
Right, thirteen, you, you only have seventy-five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars if you move them in the lineup with his presentation.
Okay, so just, I mean, I, I won't belabor the point, just so we know, because we, because we're already over budget. So we just need to find money for these. I definitely.
I'm strictly, they're all on the list.
They're all on the list.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so everything, we don't need to, we don't need to do anything?
Right, right.
Okay, then lastly, I have a question about Whole National Day. We got a, uh, I, I helped to do that event. And they got an invoice that had, I think, a, a new four hundred dollar charge. They had, they, they got a parts permit price that was double the price that they paid last year. And they got that, they got that two days ago and the event is next weekend. So I just wanted to find out, one, how did you come up with that amount for the fourteen?
I did not come up with that amount, uh, but I can follow up. From my understanding, that was add providing fire, fire service. So at the fifty dollars an hour, I think it was providing three, uh, members of one to do code enforcement or make sure that the crowd is, are, is safe. And then the other two was provide EMS. So I know from my understanding that that's how that amount came up with. For the salaries for that. It was also a three hundred dollar fee for the rescue fee. Been told that that was supposed to be waived. That was to have the, uh, the EMS unit out there, our union out there. And there was a seventy-five dollar speculative fee. So from what I was told today, um, that that three hundred dollar fee and that seventy-five dollar fee had been waived. And we were still going to provide the three members for fire department fee there, but they're contracted. And that's where the salary would come from for them. Uh, I think it's seven hours for each one at fifty dollars an hour, and that's how that fee came.
Right, so I, yeah, and I think that that's important. I think it's definitely the right thing to do. I just think the wrong thing to do, and this is not towards you, um, but because we're talking about budget. The wrong thing to do was to give, to give them that bill ten days before their event. They, they made it, they wanted to make an application sixty days before the event, but applications weren't available from the Parks Department. They weren't able to make one until thirty days before the event. And then they got a bill for twice the amount, ten days before the event, even though we had a debriefing session twelve months ago in twenty eighteen. So I am going to make a motion to direct our parts manager to charge the twenty eighteen parts permit fee and to authorize our treasurer slash CFO to transfer thirty-five hundred from our F Y twenty nineteen contingency fund to the general fund to cover this thirty-five hundred dollars of new expenses that they got ten days ago. That's my motion.
Stay. Copy, move, and second in discussion.
Repeat, repeat that motion again?
We are going to charge, uh, the O N A Day organizers the same price that we charged them in twenty eighteen. And for the additional fees that they were just assessed ten days ago, we are going to move money from our contingency fund to cover these additional fees. Because I do think they need to be covered. Those are costs that need to be covered. I just don't think that it's fair to do it.
I have a question. What, what contingency fund?
The one that we have fifty thousand dollars in that we've, uh, made moves for two other council members for this year?
Who did we make two?
I just.
Yes, we definitely have.
Hold on, excuse me, can I just ask a quick, are we in discussion?
This touch.
And I asked a question. And that is, uh, I think that if we're going to do stuff like this, we're going to have to be consistent. When everybody comes up, I mean, you know, if there's room for you to take off three hundred dollars because somebody said that we're going to give you that for free. We have, you have to take everything on an individual basis. Because I don't, we not want to hear that you did this for that one and you didn't do it for this. And I think that, did we ever identify, Mr. 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 Donald, what, did we ever, uh, identify what is a city project?
Well, so now that's something that the council has to do, so you have not, uh, just yet. But what you have, what your practice has been is that, uh, activities that have happened for, uh, more than one year, meaning you're going into your second year, you guys have approved it every year on a one-off basis.
And so.
That's how y'all have addressed it.
And so just to, to respond to that, and then I'll give it to you before, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think that it is very important that we create a fee schedule. I know that we have, um, two weeks after Whole National Day, we will have the O N M A five K. And then a month after that, we will have another five K where we will be doing road closures on a state route. And the organizers of those events have never really paid the full cost of those events either. I think that we do need to come up with both a fee schedule for events. You talked about doing fee schedules, Mr. City Manager. And then we also need to define what is and what isn't a city event so that it's clear to everyone in F Y twenty twenty that if you are not on this list, here is the price list that you will pay for our events. Because I do think that it's important to be both transparent and consistent in that pricing. And this would be the perfect time to do it because we're, we're going into F Y twenty twenty.
I, I, I still don't, I still disagree, but you know, I think there's a difference between a road race and, and even that encompasses the whole park. You, you utilize less personnel, I think, for a road. The other thing I'm concerned with too is, you know, and, and, and Ms. Wapki, you were talking about the way in this. No matter who, who does whatever over there in one of our parks, that if there's an issue, we'll get sued whether we're supposed to get sued or not, all right? So no one, I haven't heard a fee for insurance, uh, for events that happen like this. So we think we need to take that into consideration. Uh, we got to have some law bill of insurance when we do these things. I'm not against anybody doing anything. I'm just saying that we have to be equitable with everything as we go down the road. Ms. Jackson, go ahead.
I would just, is there a possibility that we can just go back to what we did last year, that amount?
I think that's the motion.
No, but he, he was asking for additional, so he wouldn't need any additional monies if they want, went, you know.
The additional was to cover the administrative costs that was not being covered.
Unbudgeted costs. And so I think what he's attempting to do is to make sure the level of service. So, uh, they mentioned last year that there was, uh, an issue with heat exhaustion and they had challenges getting there. What Councilmember Kalid is saying, we need to make sure that they're there and provide the service. And so in lieu of charging the, the fees that are unbudgeted, pull the thirty-five hundred from the contingency and then everyone is whole. Where the person paid what they paid last year, but the city provides the elevated level of service needed. Is that correct, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
No, I'm done.
Okay, I'm done.
Previous question, we have.
Of course, no, no, that was some more, that was some, let me get this straight. We were still in, we were still in discussion.
I mean, actually, that's a motion, so if somebody seconds it, then.
I have a question.
If I say in discussion.
And I still haven't said anything yet.
I'll go to you.
That always happens in discussion though, right?
So the way it works is that you can call the previous question if it's your turn to comment.
He was in. Did he call a previous question?
Hey, you recognized me. I did.
Did you, I didn't hear you say.
I did, and then I said why. I said because it's five fifteen.
I'm sorry, I did not hear you say call the previous question. Okay, so we go back to his motion. He called the previous question. We'll vote on that. There's a second on the previous question?
Second.
I probably moved the second on the previous question. All those in favor? That passes?
No, that's when you gotta have five on this question.
How many did I get? No, you have. That's five, one.
The four down here plus.
That's five, that's five, yeah. So that, that cuts off the debate. Want to go to the original motion? All right, I'll go in favor.
What's the motion? I don't know. I want to vote now.
Yes, the motion is to charge the organizers of O N A Day the twenty eighteen permit fee and to move money from the contingency fund, thirty-five hundred dollars from the contingency fund to the general fund to cover the new fees that were assessed two days ago.
Okay, I'll go in favor. That passes. Okay. Thank you. All right, uh. Before you leave, I have one or two questions, okay? One is, uh, concerning, concerning the, uh, I S O. So we will not be getting a, a higher rating of I S O this year. We, we're anticipating the I S O rating would go, would be better. Yeah, go ahead.
I, um, I'll just say before I start, I actually got a copy of our I S O document and looked at it. And so right now, we're still not to a level, I said we've got extra ten points because on a ten-point scale.
Okay.
That we have not gotten an extra ten points to raise it up to the next level. We are putting.
So we're still at three?
To get to that point, but we're still at not there.
We had three, right?
Yes.
Okay. Got a couple of questions about the hazmat truck and the safety truck. And Mr. Man, you may help me a bit. Are we leasing them from the county? And what are we doing? Or, or? I mean, but they're county vehicles, right?
Well, they're actually the, uh, state, some of the G S R.
The G S R, they're state because they came from state money, right?
They came from the states and the state provided these boards. And actually, since they're here, they're a resource for us that we can use.
Absolutely, absolutely. I understand.
Hazmat.
Hazmat. Hazmat is out, okay, I'm sorry. Hazmat is out of the G S R.
Oh, that's, okay, good. Because you must be over five years old now, the hazmat, okay. Do you ever think about a uniform allowance? You're talking about getting a uniform, right?
It was in about the two hundred and twelve six thousand.
That's not what I'm saying. It's like the police gets six hundred dollars, uh, for uniform allowance individually. Is that what yours does?
Not now, but that's what we're working on. Yes, with that money that's in here.
Yeah.
We've gotten a certain amount that each employee will have.
Okay, that's good.
That's what we're working on, um, actually looking at ordering stuff where they can just order what they need based on that allowance that they can get.
Okay.
Instead of just buying stuff for them.
That's all because I, that I have a honor to say that whatever these people need in time, we need to give to them. I mean, they're just important as, uh, as police. And we need to make sure that they're equipped, they're ready to go when time needs, so I appreciate that, Jim.
The other thing that I do need, because we want, this year to work on, is that, um, we need to find at least two acres of land that we can designate as our training facility. And then this year, our goal was to find an area that city owns and we can designate. And then next year, we can build a building.
We get it, Chris.
All right, okay.
I mean, we, do we have any land that's, I mean, we bought all this park land. Do we have any land that we bought that we already, um?
That's what I've been talking about.
We don't own that much.
We do, um.
Will, somebody give us two, okay?
The short answer is you own the land, uh, throughout the city that you acquired through parks. Uh, I know some of it, um, you've looked at, at Old National, you've also looked at, you'll be acquiring additional land parcels through Southwest Art Center. I mean, we had, so we provided some of this in the past, but I think we can probably break it down. Remember at our Peachtree, that'd be a great actual document. Whatever day, we were at the Peachtree Center, uh, budget, uh, meeting that we had, gave the guys a handout as well as an email, that same thing. It actually had different available parcels and maps. And so that would, that would probably be the most up-to-date document, although it'll need to be changed once we make some of these other acquisitions.
Okay, that's, that's moved forward. Thank you, City Manager.
Mr. Adam, I just tell you one. Okay. Well, the evening, uh, we'll be representing the city manager's office and just highlighting, uh, some of the key deliverables and highlights, uh, within the office. Um, I think many of them you are very, uh, well aware of. But of course, we've started to focus on non-emergency, uh, activities to relieve the pressure on our nine-one-one center. Uh, we've also started to expand outreach and education activities through those items like the mayor's wall, the, uh, uh, draw the blank, the, uh, South Fulton one-on-one and some of the other activities. Uh, we also, uh, looked at in this budget, uh, following the lead of council and funding those public art projects, uh, throughout the city, uh, while making sure we take advantage of the unique abilities of our residents. Uh, also, uh, making sure we comply with your recent decision to ensure that all of our, uh, employees have a competitive wage in excess of fifteen dollars an hour, uh, while also, uh, taking the citizens academies, which I think everyone has had an appetite for, for at least, uh, police and fire, but they committed a, uh, City of South Fulton Citizens Academy, which is funded at about sixty thousand dollars. Uh, as well as, uh, expanding on the city's initial efforts to define our boundaries and make our government more accessible. So, uh, there is funding to, uh, further explore the establishment of primary zip codes. We've gotten some, uh, feedback from the postal service that while it is not something that's high on their radar, they, uh, asked us to continue to advocate for it. Uh, but we do receive quite a bit of services from a variety of zip codes and post offices. So we don't expect that to happen within this year, but we plan to continue to advocate for it and as well as increasing those G I S mapping capabilities. And so one of the things I wanted to highlight there is why we did include staffing, uh, to add some specifics around the funding that we saw within, uh, Mr. Valenzuela's, uh, budget is so that transportation can actually focus on some things that we don't necessarily have the capacity for. And so while it was a small amount of money, uh, it will allow us to really make sure that the transportation, uh, mapping is up to par. You can go to the next. And so during the next, uh, city manager's report, uh, it is the intention to provide you a presentation on the F Y nineteen goals and what we've accomplished in this year. Wanted to highlight some of the goals, uh, that were, uh, included in this year's budget, which includes, uh, developing, uh, establishing, or really just building on the existing Greenway plan and making it, uh, South Fulton. And I think you guys have been very vocal that there is a very large trail program that was drafted, uh, prior to the incorporation of the city that gives the framework. But I think the concern that you expressed is that it, it doesn't really, uh, match South Fulton specifically. And so we want to make sure we follow up and focus on that. Uh, also, uh, ensuring that our nine-one-one emergency connectivity, uh, kind of goes to the next level. Part of those challenges have come with the re-adaptation of lock no man. Uh, but it is pointed out that the city should truly explore, uh, expanding those nine-one-one capabilities. So, uh, you'll see those things kind of come out of my office in collaboration with I T, uh, as well as enhancing the city's identity and branding efforts. I think that the, uh, city has been very adamant about, you know, whether it's changing the name. the, uh, city has been very adamant about, you know, whether it's changing the name or, you know, really making sure that we have our own brand, and so we added some funding for that, so that, uh, anticipation of some of the resolutions and ordinances that you plan to make sure that we can comply, uh, with those, uh, I think I mentioned the public arts and cultural events right now, it may be something that you wanna look at as you make a final decision on the budget, but we have listed, uh, cultural affairs as a part of parks, and so, uh, we believe that is the appropriate place to kinda start the conversation, but the council may have a separate, uh, idea on that, uh, ensuring that the public safety facility comes online, uh, as well as, uh, looking at the viability of, uh, various things that include, um, utility services, medical enhancements, et cetera, through a variety of studies, you know, to, to find one. Which is a summary of the proposed, uh, operating, uh, expenses, and so when you look at those, uh, you know, these are kinda large, uh, areas that I wanted to give you some specifics on, so when you look at office and administrative, that is where those staff town halls and engagement activities that we have, those fall under there, uh, the staff appreciation uh, event that we did was the second event that was, you know, really supposed to be, we took some funding from HR to be able to do it this year, so we've actually, actually put it in the budget for FY twenty. Uh, under professional, that would include, uh, your lobbyists, I think you guys had asked where were the graphic design services for the city through the contract, that actually falls under there, uh, as well, but it's for specific, uh, reports that were citywide. You have not had, it's been, uh, two years, we haven't yet had annual report, so we wanna make sure that we provide that, uh, and also, uh, what we noticed is that all of these different reports and, uh, studies and, uh, strategic plans that we have, they funded the actual work, but not the actual design and printing, and so as you know, uh, those things can be very expensive, so they are in there. Uh, the healthcare disparity study, we, we're calling it a hospital study, but that's not necessarily what it is, the resolution, uh, asked for a healthcare disparity study, and so the first part of the resolution is funded in FY nineteen, that is where, uh, someone would deliver a white paper that just kinda gives us an overview, but then it requires an actual study, and so that's funded, uh, in the professional services line item as well, uh, along with, uh, public art and your lobbyists, but one other area that is funded in there, uh, and, and I think one of you actually highlighted and mentioned it in our last piece, is that in lieu of just having different facilitators for all of our, uh, 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 council retreats and various things, is to really just be able to go out and procure a facilitator that will continue to work with us, and so that, uh, funding is in there as well. Uh, under technical and professional, uh, that is where you'll see the, to allow the GIS, uh, team to be able to not only, uh, provide the services themselves, but as you know, they have Esri and some other programs, but they're missing a few as well, so it'll allow them to be able to contract and get the technical expertise they be, need when their workload, uh, increases. Uh, also, uh, technical records, uh, specialists to be able to assist when we're delivering, uh, these project, projects, and, uh, a specific study that was requested, I believe, by not only your, uh, resolution, but also through the various, uh, activities along with smart cities, to do a smart city technology study, uh, estimated at about thirty-five thousand. I think the final piece that I wanted to include in there is while the TAD study would be included under economic development, uh, the actual design and print again is not included, so we bundle all of those things that they impact citywide to come out of the manager's office, uh, kinda because of our, uh, lack of ability to really charge those things to the various offices, um, across the city. Uh, the other printing activities that, uh, are just normal every day, uh, day-to-day and not associated necessarily with studies, would include, uh, your annual report, strategic plan that you're, uh, about to review again, business cards, uh, general, uh, books and notifications to council and the public, uh, as well as, uh, some of the postage and things of that nature that come, that get charged to the manager's office. Uh, when you look at education and training, uh, GMA, of course, is funded, the city manager's office pays that for the city, uh, the same with Eritropolis, uh, GC-CMA, ICMA, uh, and there was one more that I am, uh, forgetting, but all of those activities, um, are funded out of the city manager's office, even though they're citywide for both electeds and, uh, administrator's staff, so that's kind of a highlight, and of course, I'll take whatever question you have.
Councilman G.
Um, so I have a little budget, and I, I wanna start with, um, personnel.
Okay.
Um, during the amended, uh, during the amended part of the twenty nineteen budget.
Yep, yes ma'am.
There, uh, were nine positions, of which one is a management policy analyst.
Mm-hmm.
From ICMA.
Yes, ma'am.
So what does that person do?
So they're working on a variety of things for us, one, uh, they are, and you'll get a green team report, uh, hearing about the next three or four days, but one, they're working on making sure we can actually stand that program up, we did a pilot, which, you know, it was encouraging, but just to be honest, it didn't, a lot come out of it, so they helped to kinda analyze those type of things, um, helped to rephrase the, um, internship program, I think we kinda started off, you know, pretty well, but I saw, um, one of the things that you're championing is the partnership with Georgia State, so they kinda connect the notes and bolts of activities like that, we've been piecing together, um, the data and information related to activities like the Mayor's Walk, where we put out those reports and things of that nature, so they would actually help and lead those type of activities, uh, as well as kinda analyze data outcomes and deliverables. We only have one person that's doing that now, so it's part of the reason why we're not very responsive.
Okay, so let, let me move, let me move on.
Mm-hmm.
So the other two, um, positions, or three positions that are being requested, one is a city council liaison.
Mm-hmm, yes ma'am.
And I don't know why we need that position, the other one.
You don't like giving us the ring? I don't know, it doesn't have to do with.
The other one. The other one is, um, a GIS analyst, which I, which I believe is definitely needed because all of that is on one individual at this time, and then the other one is another management and policy analyst that's a senior, so, so when, just let me finish.
It's not new.
Let me just finish.
Okay.
So when I look at administrative, administration, and think about all of the service areas, we're becoming a little bit too top-heavy, too quick in my estimation, too quick, given that we got this many resources, this many wants and needs, you know, some from us for whatever reason, and some a lot from the citizens for other reasons, and so I'm looking at a budget for this year whose bottom line is one point three billion, and a request is going up to one point eight million. Alright, and, and that's the total budget, and I'm looking at the personnel part of that, and the city council liaison is not even in the play-in class study.
Mm-hmm.
And neither is the management and policy analyst that's senior.
They actually are, they're just not using those working titles, so.
Well, I have, I have the report, and those titles are not listed in the report, every other title throughout this entire budget is in that report, except for those two, so. I think that.
Please finish.
I think that, um, that, um, that those two, the city council liaison.
Mm-hmm.
And the management and, uh, policy person who is not on board according to this, the senior one, is not on board, it's a request as a new position for the year, so it would be my recommendation that we hold off on those two positions.
Before we make that recommendation, let me give you some insights. So the management and policy analyst senior is the ICMA person, so.
So you got two in here then?
Just let me finish, Councilman, I'm gonna explain it to you, so there, that person, you filled the ICMA position, it was an administrative, what was it called, miss? Administrative coordinator, and we filled it, we used it for the ICMA program. When the person completes the fellowship, you would want to move them into a permanent position, that is what the management and policy analyst senior is, so you really wouldn't be funding either for a full year, so they're both in the budget for a full year, but it is literally one position, and that's because you have to request it like that, because you've already got a body in one, and you would be moving them into the other.
So this would be really, really helpful.
Mm-hmm.
If you would send us a breakdown of all of these titles.
Mm-hmm.
And how much each one of the positions make, and their, uh, FTE, so that, so that it can really, really make sense, because I'm looking, it's going from nine to eleven, okay, I wanna see what that really looks like, cause maybe it should be nine and a half, or two and a half, or whatever.
We'll definitely work with HR to get you that.
So make sure that, that we get that, that's where the personnel part, okay?
Well, but you didn't, uh, get your answer on the city council liaison, and so for the city council liaison, whether you approve it or not, I have to let you know what I'm requesting, so you understand what you're saying no to, because it will have a service impact later down the line. So currently, we have, just this year, uh, sixteen hundred and fifty council requests through a nine-month period, which averages out to about a hundred and eighty-three a month, and so there is no one who can specifically handle those activities or positions. You have a records liaison, uh, Mr. Pascal, who's actually coordinating that, but the truth of the matter is, he's supposed to be, uh, coordinating the records in retention for the city and open record, and so we've kinda pushed this on him, and I think council has been very clear that he quote-unquote needs some help, and so that's what that position is supposed to do, to specifically assist that role and respond to the council request, so we've added to the back of each city manager's report, uh, an update on how we're responding to your request versus open records, et cetera. What you'll see every month is, is that each of the requests are starting to go up, whether it be open records or council requests, but the percentage of our response has started to decrease, which means that the person who is managing that process is having a difficult time meeting the demand, and so while it is always the council's will on what you will keep or remove, I just think it's important for you to know the level of capacity that is needed to meet the, the level of response that you would like.
So you're bringing up a good point, and I'm glad that you put it in that context, because I think as administration in the elected body, we need to get together and talk about this, because if we have all of these requests, that's really, uh, increasing the budget, you know, we need to, we need to really have a discussion about efficiency, we know, going back to what I said a few minutes ago, that we've got all these wishes and needs, and we got this much to go along with those wishes and needs, so somehow, we wanna have to balance this out, cause we can't, we just can't keep doing this, that, and the other, and so, um, I understand that given all of the priorities and how you being the city manager is trying to meet those priorities without really enough funding for it, and when we start talk, I'm lost in plans right now, I've heard so many different plans, or fire and, and police, and this one, and that one, and your plans, and this one, and Park's plan, I mean, it's, it's, it's overwhelming that there's so many, so I just, I just wanted to, to bring that up, and then with the, um, with the non-personnel, um, it too, uh, has increased when, you know, and particularly, professional is, is that category that I always watch, where it goes from one seventy-five up to two ninety-five,
mm-hmm.
And technical from fifty to ninety.
Mm-hmm.
And travel doubled, okay? Um, I think that there is some opportunities in there to, um, be a little bit more frugal, and then at the end of it, and I know that I've said this, but not formally yet in a setting like this, but I'm gonna need a hundred and fifty thousand from somewhere for environmental testing.
Mm-hmm.
That is crucial.
And I, and I think that's a great point, because you'll be getting a memo from me that'll probably go into the evening now, before you receive it, about the, uh, the plant, um, that is being tested on Fulton Industrial, um, where the City of Atlanta and Smyrna and Cobb.
The serogenics?
Sterogenics, yeah.
Yeah, uh, man, for the point of order, point of order, uh, it is now five forty-seven, and we still have an executive session, I mean, unless we have, unless we gonna meet.
We only have one more comment.
Uh, unless we gonna meet Monday, to, to, I'm still talking, and I called for point of order, and I was recognized and given the point of order, um, unless we gonna meet Monday.
No.
We, we got something gotta be done, cause it's already five forty-seven, so.
So, can I finish what I was saying, please? So, so my point is, my point is that we need to talk about that offline.
Understood, and, and I would say, outside of that, I think, uh, when you look at the increases, you have to remember that if you pass a law ordinance, we have to comply, and so these professional services, again, all of the items that I called out to you, these are us producing the documents, the studies, et cetera.
I know.
That tie into your ordinances and resolutions, and so if we do not fund those activities, the council has to know and be aware that we're not, that is why we're not delivering on the legislation that you passed, so it's a, you have the title to.
My last thing is that we know that we were here for eleven hours the other night.
Yes, ma'am.
When we were supposed to be here for nine.
Understood, yes ma'am.
Um, yeah, uh, I do just need to say that it, it looks like our, our city council is probably not going to change that much, we know, we know what our city council is, we know how we operate, if we, and this goes back to the Parks ordinance, if we are not giving ourselves enough time to do the work, that's on us, our city is only getting more complicated, seems like we're gonna be hiring even more people, uh, we're gonna have an even bigger budget, and we, we just, we just not, we're not giving ourselves enough time to do the work, so I, I'll try and make these really quick, the first is, the, um, the single facilit, the single facilitator for all events, I won't spend a lot of time on it, I mean, I, I don't need you to respond, but I just wanted to say on the record, I don't think that it was, I don't think our issue.
Single budget, not single facilitator, single budget for facilitation.
Okay, a single budget for.
And I may have missedpoke, I apologize.
Okay, yes, I do want us, I do want us to rotate facilitators, I think that that, I think that that helps, um, the health study and the disparity study, are those in the URA and in the, well, first of all, is a health disparity study the same as the disparity study, those are two different studies.
Two different things.
Are they in the budget or the URA?
Not in the URA, no.
They are not.
But they are in the budget.
Yes, sir, that's what I was reading off, yes, sir.
Uh, the economic, the economic, uh, strategic plan, the, the, here's what I wanna say about all of these studies and all these budgets, the economic development strategic plan, I think that we need to expand the scope of work, I, I, I met with the AE, and one of the things that's not in there is that after we, we're going and doing all of these town halls to get all the feedback, but there is nowhere in that study where we will go back to those same town halls and say, here are the findings, we just present the findings at the council meeting, and so one of the things that I would like to see us do in all of our studies, whether it's the disparity study, the healthcare study, is that if we are holding town halls for things, then once they have made their recommendations, they should go back to those same town halls and explain their recommendations and take questions from the audience, cause that will probably reduce the amount of questions that we will get as staff and councilmen, um, the.
And yes, that would require, uh, adjustments to the scopes of work, but yes.
Okay, two more quick things, and so I, I think we just need the budget for that, two more quick things, the city council liaison, is that, uh, person going to be responsible for supervising the legislative process? for supervising the legislative process that we are still?
So, they could.
So, I think that they should. Uh, I would definitely, if we're going to have somebody who is responsible for our legislative process and not having been shared about all of these different people, having to be a point person, that would be very helpful. And also, I would like for them to be in charge of all of these advisory boards and committees that we keep creating. I think lots of our requests are around that.
Yes, sir.
Um, and then last, the last personnel question is.
May I ask you something about the legislative process? The problem with that is, we're trying to make that kind of autonomous. If the person that's under me is managing your legislative process, I think that responsibility should remain with the records administrator when he moves under the clerk, because the clerk is kind of the, uh.
Well, let me say it like this, I, I think, I think we've been talking about this legislative process for a long time, but for whatever reason, we're still not done with it, it's still not clear. And so, I just, I would like going forward for it to be somebody's job, to make sure that we get this thing done. And it, and it needs to be one person's responsibility who's not juggling ten other things.
Agreed.
So, even if it's just the completion of the automation.
Understood.
Um, the last one, the, the, the quality, we have this quality assurance person, Joy Marshall. I'm, I'm not clear exactly what she does.
Okay.
I'm not clear why she would be supervising the G I S person. I don't see how G I S and quality assurance are, okay.
Yeah, so.
And then, and then my last question about that data, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry to rush you, but I know people want to get out.
No, I'm sure.
And, and we, and, and we can talk about it offline if you think that, that it's a data-driven decision. But speaking about data-driven decisions, I haven't really seen any data from the Q A, like, we have this quality assurance person, but I, i- is there, is there data that says this is, that moving, moving these departments around improves efficiency? And like, here, here is the data that shows this was the right thing.
Absolutely, so I, I would say you've got to look a little closer at that city manager's report.
That's all.
Yeah, so when you look, and, and I would say, get past the departmental section and start looking at just the raw reports with the summaries at the end. So, what you'll see, that's how you get the data on the increased numbers of permits. That's how you get the number on the reduction, uh, in service time. So, all of those type of things are analyzed that way. I think that's why we're asking for additional assistance. I tell you, just by adding the I C M A person to that team, that's how we've been able to now streamline the process for the, uh, green team. And, and I'm excited to bring that report back to y'all. But yes, that's, that's how all of that information is made.
Well, I think because, because we have lots of, there have been lots of comments about, uh, what's the most efficient place for, for a department to be, or even like some of the things that we're talking about. I think that it would be helpful, not only to see the data, but to have Ms. Marshall in the room when we're making those decisions, so that she can get feedback.
Honestly, yeah. All right. And I know we're closing out, but I think that brings up a great point, is that, you know, the council is, you know.
I'm sorry, Mr. Donald, we got to go to.
I understand.
Can I make, can I move that? We're going to.
We're going to let him finish his statement, then we go. I just think the council runs the city, basically, at the end of the day, the buck stops with y'all. So, it is very important for when you want something, very similar to what you just said, all you have to do is ask for it. So, if you tell us what you want and what you need and additional information, we're glad to provide.
Thank you.
All right, entertain more.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session for real estate not to exceed six thirty.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to go into executive session for real estate only.
Can we say both say litigation?
Yeah.
I, 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 I make a motion to go into executive session for real estate and litigation, not to exceed six thirty.
Second.
Third. Let me move to second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Counselor, we have something to eat. I'll intake a motion to.
I make a motion to, um, reconvene and to close executive session.
Second. I'm going to move to second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, um.
I, I. I, I want to make a motion to amend the meeting schedule so that on September tenth, we will meet at two o'clock for our U R A meeting, and that Sep- September tenth at two o'clock will be for U R A's meeting, and September tenth at six o'clock, we will have our first public hearing.
Second. I can second, right, even on chair.
Yeah.
Second. Probably move to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I want to make a motion. I want to make a motion that a hundred and forty-five thousand be put into the budget in the environmental line for testing.
Second. Probably move to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, find the, what was that amount?
Instructed.
To instruct the CFO to find the amounts of the projects to the U R A and in districts five and seven, in the amount of, I think, what is it?
See, I, we don't know.
Based, based off what the attorney, uh, acquisition of property number is, to be added to the U R A.
I second.
Can I explain in second?
Any weight, probably move to second, any discussion?
Discussion.
We didn't, we didn't list them out, we just said whatever.
Oh, okay.
Can I explain one day? I don't think you have to make a motion, it has to be added on that list.
Well, we've already done it.
We're making a motion.
Why, that's what his motion is, for you to amend the list, so that the proposed budget would include that item, that's the amount next to that item.
So, similar to the previous item with Ms. Gill, y'all, they're basically directing you to earmark it in the budget, and so, they, they're basically saying, you figure out the cuts, but ensure that these line items are there.
But that's the thing, it's in U R A, in the U R A, I can't do.
You can't cut.
I can't cut.
Well, there wouldn't be any cuts, because right now, there is.
So, we just.
Approximate six million is undesigned.
Well, how about this, we can make a motion, we can make a motion to add it to the list.
To add all the other.
Wait, point of order, point of order. We can make a motion to add it to the list.
Yes.
And at the U R A meeting, we'll figure out the list.
Exactly.
So, we're just making a motion to add it to the list.
Yes. All right, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes.
I make a motion to adjourn?
We, we have an action item, uh.
Yeah, so this action item, um, is to authorize the, uh, city treasurer to pay for the acquisition of the Southwest Art Center and South Fulton Art Center parcels in the amount up to twenty thousand. We don't expect the amount to go over thirteen thousand, but just in case there's some unforeseen, um, closing costs, uh, it would be for, for him to make that payment and for the city manager to negotiate the logistics and execute the documentation for a transfer of the parcels.
All right, I think that was already an action.
Oh, okay.
So, so moved, I guess, uh, um, we're clear on that? That's the action that was for you, right?
Right.
Yeah, you need to vote on it.
Yes, you need to.
Okay, I entertain more.
I make a motion.
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion to do a stay by our decision turn.
Second.
No, I'll be at your house, I'll be at your house.
Thank you.
Do you be doing that?
No. Properly, properly move to second, any discussion? Not on the phone. Hearing none, all those in favor? That carries.
I had to do that.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll move to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Have a good weekend.
You're that woman in the.
I'm in the office.
Hold on, we lay all ladies, everything.